Ready? Seven o'clock. Good evening, welcome to West Covina City Council Meeting. Today is September 15th right now, seven o'clock sharp. Finally, we start on time. Okay, and it's a record, okay? So tonight invocation will be led by Chaplin Kelly Dupay from Faith Community Church, followed by the Pledge of Legion led by Councilman Johnson. All rise please.
Pastor, go ahead.
All right, well, let's pray and ask God's blessing on our meeting tonight. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for your blessing on the city of West Covina. Lord, we thank you, God. What a privilege it is to live and work in such a great city. And God, we just pray that you would bless this council meeting tonight. Lord, that you would watch over and give our council members wisdom as they discuss the issues that affect all of us. We thank you, Jesus, that you are with us and present in this meeting. And God, we just lift up our police and firefighters, those who are up on the front lines fighting the fire in the mountains right now. God, we pray that you would keep them safe and give them success as they would attack that Bobcat Fire. And Lord, be with our police officers as well, Lord, as they're out on the streets keeping us safe tonight, God. We pray for those two deputies that were shot on Saturday. And just thank you, God, for sparing their lives. And we pray, Lord, that you would protect them, or I mean, continue to heal them, Lord, and watch over them, and of course, protect them as they are recovering from that ambush. Lord, be with our officers who are out on the streets tonight patrolling. And we thank you, God, for your goodness. We thank you for your presence. We thank you, Lord, for your blessing upon this meeting tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to republi- Thank you, Pastor.
Assistant City Club, roll call please.
Good evening, Councilman Castellanos.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Shoemaker. Mayor Pro Tim Lopez Viado.
Present.
Mayor Wu.
Here. And, okay, City Attorney, do you have anything to report on the closed session?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you so much. They will move on presentation. The first one is proclamation regarding the prevention of the month. Okay, and would you please, our fire chief?
I think during this season is the wildfire and plus a lot of issue, okay, create for a lot of our resident, our citizens, especially in California, in Oregon, it's really become a catastrophe for a lot of resident. So I think this is something, and I see so many of tragedy of the children, they out of place, okay, and it's ridiculous, okay, what we can do, okay, to see the prevention, okay, and how we can stop and help, okay? And I hope people can donate and helping all those people misplace because especially a lot of children. And then see how we can go for me or something to help those, okay, people really in trouble. I think they owe our brother and sister, I think important for us to help them during this very, very tough time. And I think we talk about prevention of the month, and I want the fire department to kind of show us. I don't think, talk about the kitchen, the household, but we talk about how about our city, okay, about our dense of all the wood area, okay, about our park. I think we can talk about all this. How can we as a resident in West Covina to help out prevention, to stop all this tragedy for people losing their life and property? Yeah, go ahead.
So just quickly, I want to touch on the fact that the theme for this year's Fire Prevention Week is cooking and kitchen safety. So I just want to read a real quick announcement or message. In honor of National Fire Prevention Week, I would like to encourage the community to be fire safe by checking their kitchens for any fire hazards and by using safe cooking practices. In addition to that, just any help from the community to make sure you're being fire safe with regards to brush hazard, making sure that you're properly cleaning up your property, and looking out for fire hazards around the community, we would greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
I would think about you would talk forever. Okay. Yeah, then I have to fill it in about, so, okay, I understand, okay, the cooking people like sometime my wife or myself, not my wife, me, okay, I forgot to, okay, turn off the stove and they create the issue. So, so right now, all the home, they require to put a fire alarm, okay, right? Okay, a smoke alarm, okay, for sure, also device to help people, okay? And what kind of, okay, maybe suggestion, how can we help the household inside using a sprinkler system, okay, or something? New home, I think a lot of new home, they require a sprinkler system during to our current situation. Yeah, go ahead.
So smoke alarms actually aren't required in a kitchen. In fact, we don't encourage that just because it's more likely for them to go off on a regular basis because of the heat. Having a fire extinguisher in the kitchen could be very beneficial in preventing a fire from getting out of control. Sprinklers are definitely a great resource. And for anybody who's doing any new construction in their home, we will, over a certain square footage, we will require sprinklers to be put in. And all new homes require sprinklers as well.
Yeah, very good, okay? And how about beside the kitchen, how about the outside, about how about some people live on the hillside? Like we have a hillside area, and we have people living close to the Glaston Park, okay? And we have south side, we have a common area, it's very dense of wooded area. So how as a fire department, how you're helping the resident to clear, okay, those potential fire hazard that will burn down people's home?
So for any residents that live in the sort of the wildland urban interface, near Gallser Park or towards the south end of the city, we do encourage defensible space. So anywhere from about 100 yards or rather 100 feet and in from the house, just make sure the brush doesn't get too overgrown, make sure your grass is properly cut, trees are properly maintained. Again, that will go a long way to make sure you have a buffer zone if in fact a wildfire were to start, that it wouldn't, you know, become too large right next to your home.
Yeah, and how about we have the 16th Park, and we have talking about dense of wood area. Do we, fire department, have you survey any potential fire hazard so we can proactive to stop, okay, or clear the area? So in that way, people live in their neighborhood, they feel more safe.
So we have all of our fire engines, all the stations around the city going around and looking through the neighborhoods to identify potential brush hazards. So that's one thing that's actively ongoing. In addition to that, any major concerns that come up do get forwarded onto the Fire Prevention Bureau, and we look into those more aggressively. We also send out notices to residents to try and gain compliance and making sure that they properly maintain their yard.
Very good. Resident, any question? Okay, one, two, okay, Sarah, I know you always have a question, go ahead.
That I love West Covina Fire Department. My kids, yes, one of them was right here, started a fire in our camper, left a candle, we had a massive fire. And they came and they, we didn't know if the kids were in there or not, but they risked themselves to come in, even though the power lines were coming down, they pulled me back and they went in there. And my kids will help with Fire Prevention Week. And we're very thankful for you guys.
So you want to say something since you are the one of them?
Um, just be really careful of fires, oh. And be careful of what you're doing in like your kitchen and candles. Don't leave candles, oh my gosh. No, don't, don't do it, it's not worth it.
We've got seven of them that will help with this week, so.
I grew up in Galle in about, I want to say 20 to 30 years ago, there was a big fire before a new development was opened up. And there was one house that was spared. And the reason why it was spared was because the homeowner planted succulents all around it. And everyone around him burned except for him. So really look at landscaping and landscaping that would protect your home and dissipate the heat by the moisture that's contained within the plant.
Good jobs. Okay, thank you, Chris. Oh, man, that's too much. Okay, any other question? Okay, otherwise, okay, here, represent West Covina, we have a proclamation regarding the fire prevention months. We want all the resident to understand and to help out during this very, very tragedy time. We want to help out not only protect yourself and protect your neighbor too. So here is a proclamation, and I hope all the resident to work with our fire department for this, okay, very important issue during this very dry and windy season, okay? Okay, this one is something is, see, even we in the pandemic, but the show must go on, right? Right, we're not going to stop by this stupid virus, okay? So we are going to continue to move on with our community event. So I want to thank, okay, our mayor Pro Tim, Letty Lopez Viado, would you come down? Okay, his continued start with the first years of West Covina Film Festival and this year, second years, okay, due to we cannot get together, so she did a virtual one, okay? And we got a lot of people, okay, join and participate and for this community event. So you will not only, okay, try to keep safe for yourself, but we still want to have a community event for people to make movie, make film. And then we have so many participate, participant to help out and to maybe showing what the city is about, togetherness, united, helping each other. And this is what West Covina represent. So I want to thank, I want to hand over the mic, otherwise I will talk forever. So I've got the mic to Mayor Pro Tim, let her to represent this film, Filmet West Covina to show all this winner for the 2020, okay, and the very important years, nobody will forget, but the show still going on. Okay, thank you so much, okay?
Thank you. So as you know, when COVID happened, it made everybody stay home, do nothing. And so Filmet West Covina was able to give families an opportunity to work together and create short films that was open to all residents of all ages and give the opportunity to win cash prizes, which helped during this time when everybody was like losing income and stuff. So that helped. And something to be proud of is that we're the only one, definitely that I know in the San Gabriel Valley area, actually, I can't even think of any city that does this besides LA and Hollywood that puts something like this together. So I just wanted to thank everybody who participated and submitted their films. It was actually nice to see the young, I've seen toddlers in there, we had a third grader to the elderly, so we had all ages to work on this project. But if you missed the film and if you wanted to see all the films that was submitted, you can check out the red carpet premiere on YouTube, Filmet West Covina, you could see the whole transition as like the whole red carpet experience. And this couldn't be possible without the partnership with the city of West Covina and the sponsors, Athen Services, Mean Creative Studios and Art Academy, Eastland Chevron, Donaghy and Associates Real Estate, Kiwanis West Covina, Casiano Family Practice and Covina Urgent Care, which is Councilman Casianos, and West Covina Police Officers Association. So before introducing the whole team, I'd just like to show the top three films. These were judged by five judges, two from our community, and three that are in the professional industry, who's not here, but they do this as a living. So it was nice that they reviewed all the films, and these were the top three that won cash prizes. Third place won $300, second place won $500, and first place won $800. So I, they are here today, and we'd like to honor them by showing the film that they created. So this is a third place, which is A Bone to Pick by Waze Young.
Wow, smells so good. I love ribs.
No, I love ribs.
What an idiot.
No, you're an idiot.
Shut up, loser.
No, you shut up.
You cheated.
I won.
Oh, you cheated. You won like this.
I swear I won.
Do it.
You can see, you can see the scissors, you can see the scissors, okay?
No, but you won like this.
Girl, but I won.
It doesn't matter, I won. I have a rib, I have a rib. I'm eating a rib anyway, I mean. This is all your fault. If you didn't make up the story, let the problem go. You're the cheater.
You own. Go away. Cheater. Loser, can't spell. Watch out for karma. Ha, guess what you'll lose next? Turboget? Whatever.
I'm ready to go now, put on seatbelt.
Okay. Oh, wait.
Wait, where are you going? We're gonna be late.
Go, go, go. I got it so good. Somebody's gonna cry tonight, Patty. I'm gonna go to Dairy Queen and reward myself. And I might even buy you one, Patty. But yes, we're gonna eat it. One for me. I have my precious money. Money, 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 money. Wait, my money's gone. Where's my money? Money? Hello? No, 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 this can't be, this can't be. No.
Oh.
Second place was On the Clock by Moises Vera. And all these films were five minutes and under. We've had the shortest film of 30 seconds, up to five is the max.
Hey, maybe we should go and check on him.
Or maybe we should.
But what if he's dying? We haven't seen him in a couple of weeks. He hasn't even gone to use the restroom.
Dude, he does. He uses the restroom all the time. I heard him yesterday. Nah, I'm sure he's fine. There's that keep out sign.
You think I care about the sign, Sean? Let's go.
Forty-fifth to the ninth.
Eric?
What?
That's it, just what?
Did you not see the sign?
Dude, I told you.
What is all this? Seventy minus eighty-five over three eight?
Don't touch that.
Oh, okay.
Oh my god.
Don't touch. Yeah, don't touch.
There's no sign that says no touch.
So what are you doing?
I think I've got it. This may challenge everything we've learned and believed in, but with change comes a new chapter, and this is it.
What are you talking about, Eric? Have you gone insane?
Insane? I might be able to do what everyone thought was impossible. I might be able to time travel.
Time travel?
Well, according to the math and the 27 laws of science that correlate with the system of time travel, including the teachings of others before me, I think I might know the system. According to the parable, it's linear, so that means that... Whoa, what just happened?
Dude, we're in the 50s.
Now we just shrunk.
How is this even possible? It must have been something with a time continuum in the mainframe. This doesn't make any sense.
English.
What?
English, what does that mean?
You just don't understand. The time machine has a cooldown. You realize that if we don't meet that cooldown, we'll stay like this forever.
So how long is the cooldown time?
The cooldown is 120 seconds. But as of right now, the time we waste it, we only have 90.
Where'd you even get an hour from? Nevermind, we don't have time for this.
I know the exact equations to get us out of this, but the thing is, I just need to get up there.
All right, let's go. How are we gonna get up there?
I can probably hit the table so the cable can fall down, that's the deal. That's actually not a bad idea, Sean.
My bad.
Hey, Sean, push that broomstick over, let's see if I can get up. Perfect!
You sure about this?
There's no time left, I have to do this. What the?
Hey, where's your hat?
This is not my top priority right now.
Hey, guys, you got this little baby hat. You like that?
Know what? Hey, guys, there's actually an error in the system. Seems that I could send you guys back to the 1990s. That would kind of suck, huh, right, guys? Guys?
Yo, bro, where are we?
Is that a Blockbuster?
The what?
Thank you, On the Clock. Does the Blockbuster still exist? And then first place, which was the grand finale of $800, is Home by Jolene Jimenez and Angel Coe.
When you can't fall asleep, what do you think of? Is it a place or a person? People say that the best sleep is when you feel the most at home. For me, home is here with you. Home is when your pets greet you at the door when you get home. It's the waiting porch light that shines your path from the driveway. It's turning off the GPS when you get off the freeway, knowing every road that leads you to the front door. It's knocking out on the couch with the TV still on and having someone wrap a blanket around you so you don't get cold. It is feeling safe, secure, comforted. It is feeling warm, welcomed, and loved. Home is knowing that whatever happens outside in the world, you will always have a place to come back to. It's knowing that even when you leave to chase your dreams, you'll find security in returning. It's when you know the world can be scary and keeping a smile can be hard, but the warmth of your family's pride gives you the strength to carry on. Home is dumping your bags on the floor after a 12-hour shift and craving a warm, relaxing shower. Home is where the best snacks are, the goldfish and the PB&J and a juice box. Home is where your heart belongs. Home is not defined. It's not a place or a person, it's a sense of peace, of joy. It's a feeling, a feeling felt in our hearts. It's here, here, and here. It's you, and you, and you, together at home.
Thank you. Hello. So that was first place, and you could see the theme for this year was Together at Home, and we wanted to thank you for making West Covina your home. So thank you very much, and we look forward to everybody participating. Mayor Wu, may you please honor them with a certificate? If you see the premiere, it's an hour and 45 minutes, you can watch that. So we'd like to... So we had the live streaming, which it showed all throughout, and then we had a drive-through award ceremony where everyone can come and pick up their awards, take pictures. We actually had a special event outdoor, and it was really great, and they all showed up. Okay, so third place, A Bone to Pick by Waze Young. Go ahead and come here with your whole family. It was a group effort. Thank you, congratulations. Thank you. Second place, On the Clock by Moises Vera and his team. Come on down. Thank you, congratulations. Now, first place, and they came out with a bang on that day of the event, is "Home" by Jolene Jimenez and Angel Coop. Come on down, the whole family. Thank you. Okay, now it's... So I just wanted to acknowledge, uh, the diverse team that we have. Um, this is citywide, obviously it was open to all city of West Covina. Last year was just only geared to students, junior high and high school students. This time, we opened it up to entire residents, so we had family. There was one filmed year COVID, that it was an adult with a mother, so it was both, uh, two generations. So that was really great. Um, but I'd like to acknowledge the diverse team. Somebody told me, hey, your team has, you know, all ethnicities, all ethnicities, all talents, all ages, so it was just great, which made this year even grand. Um, I'd like to acknowledge, um, the first one, which, uh, is Kiwanis, Brad Manning, and Mary Happy Price. But I know Happy, she's a, she has a meeting, she's a lieutenant governor, so she had to be meeting today. But I just wanted to say, Brad, he's a part of the Kiwanis, he's, uh, he helped out so much. He actually helped us last year. He brought the whole Kiwanis, and they had volunteered, they made the event live, and it was successful. So I wanted to say thank you, and actually, thank you for being part of the committee. You take Happy's. Mary, but everybody calls her Happy.
I just want to say thank you to Letty for thinking of this project. When I heard about this, and it was late in, in the development of the project last year, I just felt like we needed to get a hold, a part of it, as part of the schools, as part of the community, what creative outlet for our kids. This year, we had some challenges. I think we met the challenges, I think it was actually even better. And I can't wait till next year, so thank you for having us be a part of this.
Thank you. So, and then, we have a good partnership with West Covina Unified School District, and so, thank you for that. And so, on this committee, we actually have school board member Michael Flowers, he's part of the team. There you go. This is how we do it, right?
Mike, you want to say something? Now this is how we do it. No, no, I just want to thank Letty Lopez Diado, this is her baby. And she met, she brought this into existence, and we would, I mean, she's amazing. And I just want to say, thank you, you know, we love you, and thank you to the city, and thank you to the West Covina School Board. I love the partnership that we are developing, let's keep it up. Thank you, thank you guys.
So, the next three is actually very special, because when we started the first annual Film at West Covina, uh, these three are actually last year's winners. And so when we asked them to be part of the committee, I'm so happy and grateful that they joined in, and it makes a huge difference. So I'd like to bring up Lauren Aquino, Julianne Juarez, and Carlos Acosta. These three were our top film winners last year when we had Thing, and so it was really great. His editing skills, this young generation, because they do Instagram and social media, that, you know, we're like, whoa. So I just wanted to say thank you for everything, your hard work. And they made the virtual, if you, you have to watch the virtual live streaming, it's just amazing. It's like the Academy Awards that they do, so it's, it's professional, so thank you, thank you.
Yeah, you the last year winner, you took a lot of money. I remember, and I think you went to UCLA Film School, right?
USC.
USC, ah, USC, okay.
I'd also like to start by thanking Letty so much for inviting us on board and, uh, giving us a great time just working together. It was an amazing time overall, and I really recommend it to anyone who wants to get involved with this as well. But yeah, um, we can't wait for the future of where this is gonna take us and how big this event could get. I encourage anyone in the future to also get involved with this. And if you want more information, feel free to follow our social media, @filmmwestcovina.
Um, I just want to thank you, like Carlos said, um, this was a first for all the three of us, and I think it was a really good opportunity for all of us, and I can't wait for next year.
Thank you, Letty, it was a really fun experience. I think, uh, this is good to help us and bring more people on.
So, uh, future Francisco Pera and Georgie Lucas. Congratulations, we're waiting for your future career. Okay, thank you, thank you, yeah, appreciate it.
And then, saving the best for last, uh, she's the heart of the nonprofit organization. She was in, on board last year, and she did it again, she just knows how to make things better. Uh, I wanted to introduce Stephanie Louvano.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to say thank Letty for bringing this event again the second consecutive year, and for all the team, this is a really great community event. Um, but I also want to present a certificate, Mayor, if you can accept it, for the city of West Covina. This is a certificate, and this bag is for the city of West Covina as a gift. So thank you guys for your support, city management team, all the staff, they're, they're promoting... They helped us, they helped us promote this event, and without them, we wouldn't have been able to reach out to as many people. So we look forward to the continued partnership, and hopefully, next year, we can get even more people involved, and just continue to make this a great community event.
Thank you for coming to the event, thank you Carlos, you designed the shirt, so. So thank you again, and we look forward to next year, and we hope we have more participation, and of course, our winners, you're more than welcome to join on the committee again, and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton, okay, please stay, okay? Here, okay, this is a wonderful event, I think this put our city, our residents together, especially our future generation, I want to thank you for your participation, because this is what the city, what our youngsters continue to see, this is a good thing, a great thing. And we want to continue to show you, show you all, okay, want you to continue to come over here to show your project. We really proud, proud of you. So, well, we present, West Covina, 120,000 population, the city council, we want to give, present a certificate for our mayor proton, for continue to, okay, fight for this event, even in this tough time, continue to spend a lot, a lot of hours, even you have a full-time job, a full-time city council, and still willing to participate and put this thing together with all these volunteers, with this, our future filmmaker. Thank you so much, here is a certificate for you, I know, you're okay, okay, this is something, we very proud of you to put this event together. Thank you so much.
Thank you again, I know my husband says, where do you find the time? Because I'm like volunteering here, full-time in LA, here, council, and then mommy mode with two kids, and then still manage to put this together. But I did promise that I wanted a community, and this is actually a start to building community together and partnership. So I look forward to building a stronger community in our city, city of West Covina.
Next year, the third, okay, anniversary for our film, make it even bigger, okay? I think that time, we are...
We'll get more help, though.
Yeah, I can guarantee next year, we're not going to do the virtual, we are going to be live, and a big event in our city council, in our courtyard, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, team, thank you everybody for coming.
Yeah, before I, before I move to oral communication, uh, I want to kind of, we have a happy times, okay, showing our youngsters, but at the same time, uh, we have a sad news. Okay, one of our beloved, our neighboring city, former mayor and current city council, okay, he passed away, okay, and he is, okay, beloved, okay, and doing the, yes, and he basically, so I want to have a germ, okay, um, memory to this wonderful human being, he been helping the community, and his name is Daniel Holloway, as a city council, okay, of La Pointe City. And, and I have been fortunately to acquaintant this person in the, okay, San Gabriel, okay, council of government, okay, and he sometimes sit next to me, and he been, okay, provide some guidance and, okay, and information, because he been doing this for a long, long time, in 20, 30 years. So, so, okay, and he's veteran, he's serving the Navy. But let me read some of this, okay, regarding who he is, and that he should be remembered, because he is a hero, okay, veteran, not only that, served the community as an activist. But tonight, okay, I would like to adjourn our council meeting in memory of La Pointe City Council member, Daniel C. Holloway. Our deepest condolences to his wife, Hilda, son, daughters, and his family at this heartbreaking time. Mr. Holloway was a veteran who served our nation in the US Navy, and for many years on the La Pointe City Council. He was a devoted community leader and kind individual who connected with residents of all ages. He received the Golden Apple Award for his outstanding school service in organizing and fighting to keep Walkman High School open. He was named one of the Senator Ed Hernandez Veteran of the Year in 2015. He passed unexpectedly on September 8, 2020, on his sleep. So, uh, okay, our deepest condolences to his family, and as a city clerk, would you send a condolence, a city letter to his family? And he would be really, really missed, he's such a nice guy, okay? And, so anyway, uh, I'm going to move to, um, oral communication, and how many speaker we have today?
Good evening, Mayor, we have six speakers and two, um, two calls.
And can we have in-person first?
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is Elsie Messman, followed by Jerry Patris, followed by Colleen Rosati.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Elsie Messman. First of all, Mayor, council staff, and everyone here tonight and at home. My name is Elsie Messman, a resident of West Covina. First of all, why is council staff making all these presentations when people are holding on the phone at home? This is really, um... Not really, if it's important, fine, but why can't some of this wait until the ban is lifted? I think a little bit more consideration would be appreciated. Item four, extending the emergency declaration. For what? Extending the emergency declaration, uh, for residents of West Covina, you want to give unlimited control to the city manager for another month? It was only approved by council on March 2019. This man has only been on the job for a year and a half, and his past history proves that he is not trustworthy. Why would someone give the ability to do what they want without any transparency? His history has proven he's not capable to do the job. If anything, now is, is a desperate, we're desperate for money, and desperate people do desperate things with no oversight. This is a critical time for the city. A perfect example, this ad was placed in the paper in San Gabriel Valley Tribune. And I don't know how much this cost, but this is a perfect example of, of what is happening. This went to the Superior Court regarding the bond. What happened? The residents have not heard how much money was wasted on this ad? Attorney or other fees? Does the council know how much this cost? This is a five-by-12, um, article that was in the San Gabriel Valley Tribune. It's probably around a thousand dollars a week. Item number 10, the homeless program. The city finally received a grant of $250,000, which came from Proposition 8, a tax on all people. On the staff report, $25,000 went to homeless encampments. As you can see, $84,000 was charged to Maintenance District 4. I would like this amount to be taken from the $25,000 the city has allocated for encampment cleanup. We should not be paying for this fee out of the Maintenance District account. As residents, we are paying a tax through Measure H. In other words, we are paying for this twice. And I hope the other council districts are paying attention. And also, why is everything listed under the consent calendar? Could it be that the city wants to get home early? I'm sure not, as you know, there's always a ways that you, if you want to extend it, is go to work eight, eight hours a day, five days a week. Thank you.
Thank you, Elsie, nice to see you again. Uh, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Jerry Patris, followed by Colleen Rosati, followed by Chris Miller.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm commenting on two issues tonight. The manner in which public comments emailed to the city council are posted on the city website, and Agenda item four, extending the local emergency declaration. Public comments. Recently, city leadership decided that posting emailed comments on the city website is an equivalent substitute for reading those comments out loud during the council meeting. While I don't agree with that decision, I accept the concept that the city council has the legal right to set parameters for public comments, as summarized in the Local Government Meetings page from the ACLU of Southern California's website that I provided you. My concern is the manner in which the emailed comments are posted to the city website. In the city's agenda, in the Agenda's email instruction, the city requests the full name and address be placed in the email. Staff then post emails received by the designated time without redacting the individual's physical address or email address. Posting public comments without redacting the individual's address is in direct contrast to the manner in which West Covina posts other documents containing addresses. For example, the legally required campaign disclosure documents redact personal addresses before those documents are posted on the city website. When I contacted the city clerk's office and asked why emailed public comments were posted differently from other documents, I was told one of the city's attorneys instructed them to post it that way. It's an official document. I'm not going to argue with staff. They're doing the job they are instructed to do. I am here to remind all that by law, individuals are not required to even give their name or address to participate in government. I ask that the same courtesy and respect be given to residents who email in their public... who email in their public comments that you, as council members, receive when your legally required campaign finance forms are posted on the city website. Personal addresses are redacted. That there should be not two standards, one for thee and one for me. On Agenda Item 4, the local emergency declaration. Residents elected you, not the city manager, to represent them. The city manager's decisions reflect on you. He is an unelected bureaucrat, and is making decisions residents hold you accountable for. Please pull Agenda Item 4 from the consent calendar. We residents need to hear what criteria you are using to continue this action, and when you anticipate stopping it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Colleen Rosati, followed by Chris Miller, followed by Steve Bennett.
Good evening, everyone, council members, staff, and members of the community. I'm Colleen Rosati, your elected city treasurer, president of West Covina Beautiful, a West Covina High School Bulldog, and city council candidate for District 3. I'd like to speak tonight on a couple Agenda items, as well as address some concerns that I've heard recently while being out in the community. Before I do, I would like to remind the council and the community of the city treasurer's role and duties. They're based on City Ordinance 2298, which was passed and approved October 4, 2016. The office of the city treasurer shall be the following: to review and present monthly investment reports, to participate in investment strategy decisions, to participate in the development of the investment policy, to serve as a member of the Audit and Finance Committee, and to perform other duties at the discretion of the city council. Any duties or responsibility not specified delegated to the city treasurer are the responsibility of the Chief Financial Officer/Finance Director. The items that I would like to address are Agenda Item Number 2, Consent Calendar, City Investment Report for the month of July 31, 2020, an update of West Covina Beautiful and our impact projects, and Traffic and Public Safety: The Concern of the Community. Item Number 2, as you know, California Government Code Section 53646 requires cities to report detailed information regarding security, investment, and monies of the city, and the city's report market value of the investments held. The city investment policy, which should be reviewed annually, has a primary goal to make sure that the city's portfolio is managed at the utmost safety, liquidity, and yield. This report is in compliance with the California Government Code 53646. Just a couple key points I would like to point out on this report. The city's surplus fund are currently invested in the L.A. County Investment Pool and the L.A. County Investment Fund. The L.A. County Investment Pool has a balance currently, I'm sorry, as of July 31, $60,153, earning a rate at that time of .71%. L.A.'s balance as of July 31, 2020, has a balance of $65,926.40, earning a rate of 9 point, or I'm sorry, .92. While these rates are not record-breaking, they are above the national average. Our investments with Chandler Investment Fund continue to mature. We're rolling these funds into the mentioned above accounts, keeping them safe, liquid, and earning the highest yield possible. I'd also like to note that in this report that I gave back, I believe it was in April, there are sufficient funds to meet the budgeted expenses and expenditures over the next six months, was removed and omitted by the Finance Department. The report this evening dated September 15, 2020 restates the statement that there are sufficient funds to meet the budgeted expenses over the next six months. I'm hoping that this may indicate the city's finances are being and beginning to take a turn for the better, to afford us more stable financial position. As of July 31, 2020, the investment portfolio had a market value of $83,318,934. I'd like to note that this is the highest total market value I've seen in my seven years as your elected city treasurer. Having said that, I recommend that the city council receive and file the investment report ending July 31 of 2020. Any questions? Oh, heck, I'm not going to get to the rest of my stuff. I have a couple updates from West Covina Beautiful really quick. We did an impact project in June, and we were awarded a certificate in August, I'm sorry, in July. And I'd like to read the letter from the family, which is really heartfelt. "I can't express enough the gratitude that I feel for West Covina Beautiful and their compassion towards my father's home. My father has been a dedicated civil servant to the city of West Covina his entire life, and kept his childhood home throughout his years of service. When he was diagnosed with cancer, West Covina Beautiful made arrangements to support my father and thank him for his dedication over the years by beautifying his property in the most thoughtful way. It was an amazing community experience, and I'm grateful that my father was able to receive this visit from this organization and its partners before his passing. It meant everything to me to be able to witness West Covina Beautiful provide my father with such a grand acknowledgement for his contribution and reinforce that he was truly beloved in this city." That gentleman, not always does West Covina pick the projects that we do. Sometimes the projects pick us, and this particular project picked us. That letter came from the daughter of former mayor and council member Brad McFadden, who passed away in June on the 18th. And we were fortunate enough to see him, and we were able to beautify his property, and we're happy to do so. And our projects will continue on. Anyone that wants to get involved, see us on Facebook.
Thank you, Colleen. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Wu.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Chris Miller, followed by Steve Bennett, followed by Brian Tabatabai.
Mayor Wu, council, city manager. Like Elsie and Jerry spoke before, Item 4, it's time that you guys take the council back. You know, you guys are responsible for the city ultimately, not the city manager. And most of us are done with COVID, even though COVID's not done with us. It's time to start bringing back normalcy. On Item 5, I think this is the third time that we're investing in the audio system since I started on council. Again, an emergency expense. Why can't this stuff be master-planned? You know, we're always spending money, and it seems like it's frivolous. On Item 8, it kind of disturbs me that we're letting go of any kind of say by doing a quid pro quo and any kind of, you know, control and holdings of the center by Edwards. A lot of us don't want to see mixed-use housing. I think really what it needs to be is a workshop within the residents, not, you know, having the city government put in input or anybody else. We need to say what goes there, because a lot of us would like open-air shops. Bring back a downtown like Covina has, like others, like Monrovia has. You know, I think the worst thing that Monrovia did is put mixed-use housing right in front of the library. I mean, it totally changes the city, the look, the feel, and doesn't make it feel like home. You know, you had a film, you know, thing where it is pushing home. Home isn't, you know, high-rises of mixed-use housing. Home is, you know, to us, is a suburban neighborhood. It's time that we, you know, bring some of that home back that, you know, didn't work. We're hearing a lot of complaints about people in the colonies, that there's a lot of crime and issues. You want to bring more of that in the city? What's going on? And then finally, Item 9 is the fire equipment. I'm for, you know, upgrading their equipment, but it better not go to county. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Steve Bennett, followed by Brian Tabatabai, followed by Minerva Avila.
Good evening, council, staff, residents. I guess we're speaking up here, we're going to announce that we're candidates. I'm also a candidate in District 3, so I will point that out as well. But I'm going to talk about three different items tonight. First one, I didn't really put them in any specific order. First time I'll talk about is Item Number 8. That's the quick claim deed over at the lakes. I'm aware that it's the location of the Michaels and the Jerome's currently. I'm aware that it's already been sold years ago, and that there's a grant deed that involves that. Much like Mr. Miller pointed out, there are a lot of people that don't like mixed-use housing. We don't want people living right on top of each other. The reason why West Covina is such a good community, a bedroom community to some degree, is because of the ranch-style housing and larger yards and things like that. And we don't want to see the transformation to a, sorry, buddy, but an L.A.-style living, high-rise living, you know? And so, you know, I think most of us here bought out here because we wanted houses. We wanted the ability to do it, and I think most people do. I'm not oblivious to the fact that there are people who like to live in that style, and I think there's a place for it. But I think that the lakes, one of the biggest issues we have there is the original design of the lakes was terrible. We put parking structures next to the largest frontage freeway we could get, which limits our commercial viability, our business ability in that area. It's a terrible design, and it was done back in the '80s. My concern with taking that development that we have, which is a somewhat thriving center, I mean, it's had some hit and miss, is that we don't even know what they're looking to do. We don't have a design, no residents even been able to see some sort of a deal that they want to do, and here they want kind of a carte blanche, get rid of that limitation of retail only. I think we're putting the cart before the horse. We really need to understand what they're going to do, because that's prime frontage real estate for our city. And if they're going to stick housing on top of retail, that's not the place for it. There are places in the city for it. The colony didn't have a retail operator in there for how many years? Because nobody wanted to have a retail spot there, probably with housing on top. So I think that's a terrible idea to remove that at this point. As for the quick claim deed and them wanting to go ahead and do that, I don't know that we really have a say in that process. Item Number 8, I'm going to kind of move over to the firefighters thing. I'm curious, I mentioned a couple of council meetings ago about the parkland from the hospital sale of Sunset Field. I'd mentioned that we should get about $460,000 returned to the general fund. I'm curious to see if the city manager's had his time to research that, since he was oblivious to that before. I'm really kind of curious what he found out, and if this has any of the money to it. There's about $435,000 being allocated out to the fire department for various protective equipment, wildlands and local and scuba gear, self-contained breathing apparatuses for those who don't know. And I think all of this is needed. I think it's all warranted. And I think that obviously we need to take care of the equipment that keeps our public safety safe, so I'm okay with it. I'm really hoping that we're not just doing a budget amendment-type scenario for stuff that we don't have. If we found the 460, and it's correct, the 460 million, or, yeah, 460,000 that we can go ahead and use, then I'm all for it, because I think I even suggested back then to use it for that. But I'm really curious to see if the city manager did go ahead and get that research done that he was unaware of. The last thing I'm going to talk about is the extending the emergency declaration. I'm not so worried about the COVID emergency declaration, because I know most of that is because you're trying to apply for federal funds and various FEMA funds and things that go with it. My concern is, if I remember correctly, the city manager and you guys did a lease revenue bonds and put the streets up as collateral and refinanced a whole bunch of our pension obligation bonds, or pension obligation, and we're saving about $10 million, I believe. And I believe the city manager's quote was, "Don't get excited. We're back to broke." Okay, well, if that $435,000 is part of back to broke, then apparently we're back to spending again, too. But on the better half is, why do we still have an emergency fiscal declaration? Not so worried about the COVID. Why are we still in a fiscal emergency? Why are we still there if we are now back to broke? Because we weren't in a fiscal emergency when we were broke before. So the question is, is why are we still there? Let's rescind the emergency, or explain why that we are not rescinding it. Because I'll tell you, as a resident, I have a hard time believing that when we replace our emergency rainy day funds of the $10 million, well, yeah, we are back to broke. We've been operating on that for years due to bad management, and I'm really curious why we're still having a fiscal emergency. I appreciate your time, guys. Have a good night. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Steve. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Brian Tabatabai, followed by Minerva Avila, followed by Ms. Ramirez.
Good evening, council. We acknowledge the land and the native peoples to whom this land belongs as its original caretakers. This is the land of the Tongva Nation, and they are still here. We stand in solidarity with all indigenous people and their right to self-determination and justice. We commit to working toward the healing of the generational trauma, theft, and dispossession native peoples have faced and continue to face. We acknowledge. It is a central tenet of service to acknowledge. As a resident, one of the few expectations we have for those who represent us is that they acknowledge our existence. It was disappointing that on September 1, Councilman Johnson ignored residents of District 1 who spoke out against the change in the gas ordinance. What was worse was his complete erasure of many of those in District 1 who continue to have issue with the change, by stating only one resident has opposed this decision. Mr. Johnson, let me introduce myself. My name is Brian Tabatabai, resident of District 1. And I, along with Robert Torres, who provided a PowerPoint presentation on the subject in October, and many of the residents I have spoken to are against the change. Ignoring has been a central theme of this council. During that September 1 meeting, Councilman Johnson did state correctly that homelessness is a major issue for nearly every resident. It was the motivating factor for my decision to run. And yet, if one visits the city's website, one can see how low on the priority list intentionally dealing with the issue of homeless residents truly is. Under Homeless Solutions for West Covina, one will find broken links, outdated statistics, redirections out of the city to county websites, and no evidence of our progress. Even in the mission of our HOPE team, one will read how little a priority dealing with homelessness really is. The mission of the HOPE team is to provide an enhanced level of safety for our residents and businesses by addressing criminal activity in our city parks and surrounding neighborhoods, as well as, as well as... I do not have to finish the statement, because as anyone will tell you, if you are the "as well as," you really aren't the mission. This is what you can find on our website. What you won't find promoted on the website is information on the San Gabriel Valley Council of Government funding programs and services. You won't find how the $7 million has been allocated. You won't find how the quarter million dollars of funds made available to West Covina for our homeless plan implementation was spent. You won't find that our representatives were absent from three of the last four meetings. Maybe homelessness stopped being an issue in April, June, and August. Maybe we no longer need advocates from our city council to deal with our homeless issue. Maybe I'm wrong, and this information is there, but after two hours of searching, is it really there? Homelessness in West Covina is an issue that can be effectively dealt with. Cities like Rockford, Illinois have been able to eliminate veteran homelessness and have been so effective that their homeless population is functionally zero. A city of 145,000 people with a median income less than that of West Covina has been intentional, made ending homelessness a priority, not and as well as, and has made certain to acknowledge and identify who's sleeping on their streets. If we are serious about the number-one issue for most residents, not only in District 1, but all of West Covina, we will need to get real-time data. We will need to have our voices heard in the SGV Council of Governments, and we will need, with the data, to address each subgroup of the homeless problem, and not wish for some magic bullet, or has become popular in politics, wish that one day it will just disappear. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Minerva Avila, followed by Ms. Ramirez. Go ahead, Ms. Avila.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Minerva Avila, West Covina resident. I live in District 4. I received an email from city staff addressing the questions I asked. I received an email from city staff addressing the questions I asked at the last council meeting. While I appreciate the response to my questions, I still don't know if the inadequacies of the gas monitoring system have been fixed. Does the city know? Does the city care? I was left confused by the city's response, so please help me understand by clarifying the following, which I emailed the city last Wednesday. First point, I am now clear on where the city stands with regard to the issue of the source of the methane gas at the Class III site. The city concurs with CalRecycle that the methane gas is indeed from waste decomposition. It is my understanding that the BKK Working Group has always disputed that conclusion and instead has consistently argued that the source is naturally occurring gas deposits. I now conclude that the BKK Working Group and the city are in disagreement with regard to the source of the methane gas at the Class III site. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Point number two, I understand that because the methane gas exceeds the regulatory limit, the gas probes are now subject to Title 27 compliance. I see this as a sign of higher risk of danger, right? What exactly does it mean to be subject to Title 27? Point number three, you indicate that the city is not responsible for addressing the inadequacies of the gas monitoring system. The city disagrees with CalRecycle. Does that mean that DTSC is addressing the inadequacies? Or does the city also disagree with DTSC? In the meantime, it has been a year since that letter. Have the inadequacies of the monitoring system been fixed? Again, have the inadequacies of the monitoring system been fixed? Point number four, I noticed in the email sent to me and in city staff comments at a council meeting last month that you referred to the city and the LEA, that's the Lead Enforcement Agency, as two separate entities. I found this incredibly confusing. I understood that the city was the LEA and used a contractor to perform its LEA obligations. So is the city no longer the LEA? Are you stating that the city transferred its LEA obligations to the contractor? And my fifth and final point, you indicate that it is not, quote, "the city's nor LEA's responsibility to resolve inadequacies with the system," unquote. So this raises a broader question. What exactly are the city's responsibility with regard to the BKK site? Again, I thank you for taking the time to answer my questions. I know this is a complex issue with many parties involved. I need to know who is responsible for what, so I can hold each party accountable. I look forward to getting this addressed here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Minerva. Okay, and next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Ms. Ramirez. Ms. Ramirez, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right. Hi, my name is Bridgette Ramirez, and I'm a West Covina resident. First, I want to say it's great you're doing the partnership with the San Gabriel Valley Council to support community members who are experiencing homelessness, facilitating rehousing, workforce development, and other good and essential long-term solutions. I think that's great. That being said, I am concerned about the $50,000 that's supposed to go to the West Covina PD for bicycle outreach programs. I'm not sure if this is referring to, I don't know, purchasing bikes for police officers or if it's referring to the homeless outreach and park enforcement team. Either way, I'm not sure why this current money that, as I mentioned before, is supposed to go to long-term solutions for people experiencing homelessness, why it needs to go to the police department, especially considering how much of our city's budget is already taken up by the police department, up to 47% in case anyone's forgotten. But going back briefly to the homeless outreach and park enforcement team, which consisted of two police officers, and Brian quoted this mission statement earlier, and I'll recode it here. "The mission of the quote-unquote HOPE team is to provide an enhanced level of safety for our residents and businesses by addressing criminal activity in our city parks and surrounding neighborhoods as well as addressing homelessness issues citywide." Such a mission statement leads me to believe that this outreach team is less about providing tangible resources for housing and mental health support for those who are homeless and more about policing them and putting them away so that they don't offend our suburban eyes. I understand that people call the police all the time when they so much as glimpse somebody who's homeless, like, that's a reality, and I acknowledge that. But I just wonder, I mean, you know, can you redirect those calls to mental health and social service professionals? I mean, they're already supposed to be your partners in this work, right? The mental health evaluation team and community services and such, since they're listed on the quote-unquote HOPE team's website. Why not make them, you know, the primary role and give them the primary funding? Or, you know, direct more of the grant money to rehousing, workforce development, affordable housing, et cetera? I know that the grant allows you to give up to 20%, of the money to law enforcement, but just because you can doesn't mean you should. Now, briefly to the police department report, Policy 310 says that the use of chokeholds and stringer holds are not authorized for use by the officers of the West Covina Police Department, but there's an amendment, any corralled slash choke restraint is strictly prohibited unless faced with a situation where deadly force would be authorized. It's an interesting statement. Who decides when this deadly force will be authorized? Policy 300.5 seems to give me my answer. Any use of force is documented and justified by the officer themselves, with the department being responsible for further collection of data. Given the pattern of our country right now and always, I wonder if we can really trust the police, the police themselves. I mean, I just, I'm, it's a genuine question. How are we as a city and a community, you know, holding them accountable to make sure, you know? And is the city council, can it be, you know, a civilian oversight committee? I mean, these are just my questions. And then my final point, briefly, I personally find nothing wrong, inherently wrong, with mixed-use housing. Not everyone has the luxury of buying their own suburban home. I can attest to that as a millennial. But that's just my thoughts anyways. Thank you for listening, and good night.
Thank you so much. Okay, and next speaker, please.
That was our last speaker, mayor.
Okay, and do we have any person present want to address to council? Either? I'm not trying to pick on you, but are you sure? Any? Jim? No? Any others present? Nope? Okay. Thank you so much. Our communication closed. Okay, and a couple of questions for our audience, okay? I think, okay, regarding, okay, okay, LZ talking about, okay, the five-by-12 ad on newspaper, okay, would you please address that? Okay, not yet. Okay, and then we have Jerry talking about ACLU email thing, maybe city attorney have addressed about, okay, the address issue. And, okay, regarding the state of emergency, the city, are we still, okay, why we still need it? Because I think last time you explained to me some kind of benefit that we can still continue to get during this pandemic, okay? So, and Chris talking about the $400,000 from the, I think Steve, right? Steve talking about, yeah, Steve talking about the sunset, okay, the $400,000 that should be reimbursed, okay? And the general fund, that basically we pay for the fire and... What's your question?
Sir?
Oh, I mean, I think he already pulled it. Okay, so we're not going to discuss today. Okay, so, and other than that, okay, and if something I missed, okay, city manager, maybe you remember, okay, would you please address, okay, to all those questions? And including the BKK? Okay, I know the, you know, it's very complicated, because we have a presentation for DTSC last time, and they're controlled by the state. And my understanding, based on last presentation, we over there at the DTSC with BKK Working Group, they told us they can always already, okay, the gas already almost done, they only have another two years to go, so only left, maybe only power, okay? So maybe you can address, I think you are present in that presentation. Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, mayor and council. Be happy to try to address the comments made by the speakers this evening, and I thank them for doing it. LC Messman had some questions about, or two things. The people that call in are called in order and do wait, as do all of us, for the first portion of the agenda, the presentations to conclude before we get to those speakers, but they're still very much welcome. Her question about the ad placed in the paper, that was a legally required ad, which was placed in accordance with those laws when the city was exploring various financing options for its unfunded pension liability. That particular ad pertained to a court validation action, which would have been required had we taken that financing vehicle. Instead, we pivoted at the last minute and did a lease revenue bond, which, out of a $204 million unfunded pension liability, resulted in a reduced interest rate. We got a fixed rate of 3.72 for the same time tenor, and we had been paying CalPer 7%. We achieved by that transaction a net present value savings of north of $50 million. And in the current year, it's really enabled us to be able to build back up the minimum required reserves. But that ad was placed by the city as we would have been required to do.
And LZ asking about regarding the District Four, okay, about the encampment?
Oh, thank you. We are exploring the possibility of using Measure H funds for those encampment cleanups. Each one of those costs about $1,400. We believe they're quite necessary and they're appropriate to be charged as they have been, but we're going to keep looking for options there, because we're trying to manage the expenditures as best we can.
I kind of agree with LZ, if we should maybe can get a Measure A money that...
Understand.
We gave to county, and the county haven't given, not got too much.
We think we've got a possibility of accomplishing that, and we're going to keep working on that. I agree. Jerry Potras asked about the public comment parameters and that the names were not being redacted. We did get a legal opinion about that, and if I could put the city attorney on the spot, I'd like to have him answer that piece, because complying with this public's right to speak is quite important to us, and we want to make sure that we continue to get it right. City attorney, would you mind speaking to that one?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, and the city clerk will clarify the conversation she had with the speaker. And let me clarify that the email that is attached to the document, within the body of the email is the address, and that's part of the comments. We're not going to redact the comments. So that's why it was included, and she's true, it's correct that you don't have to give your name or your address. It helps the city clerk identify.
Perhaps we could respond to Ms. Potras after this meeting tonight. The two speakers asked about the quick claim deed, which would enable the applicants to apply for mixed-use housing, Agenda Item Number Eight tonight. As the mayor stated, I've asked council tonight to not act on that, to table that, refer it back to staff. I need to do some more work on that one. That will not be recommended to be action upon tonight. And then the last substantive comment I wanted to speak to came from Ms. Ramirez, who asked about the city's actions with respect to the use of deadly force. We've got an agenda item this evening wherein the chief of police is going to be addressing council on a variety of topics as well as that one. I think those are the only responses I have this evening.
Regarding the, okay, state of emergency, that we still, okay, underconsidered, why is the benefit? Because I talked to you, told, okay, me regarding the benefit of that, because I already asked you regarding this issue, why you still continue need this thing, okay? And would you please explain to the resident why as a city manager still need this, okay, current, what's the benefit to the city? Okay, so I think clear the doubt, okay? And if it's a benefit of the city, okay, we want to continue till this pandemic is over. Yeah, go ahead.
Right. The city is still operating under a state of emergency. The current public health crisis and its economic impact could continue to increase budgetary strain on the city. Having this in place does enable us to continue to function in this mode. We're meeting with all the directors every single morning for at least an hour and talking about COVID issues. I think it also enables us to be able and eligible to apply for state and federal grants and aid, which we've been successful in doing as we wind our way through this crisis. So I would recommend it. There's a procedure in place for these items that are acted upon to come to council for your consideration as part of this process.
So currently, we are month-to-month, right, with this emergency?
That's correct.
Right now, you just request additional one month to monitor current situation?
That's right. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, if, maybe we had a couple of comments about homelessness and how we handle it. Maybe if our chief or someone could speak, and maybe Mark as well, about the different things that we do and the limitations we have.
Before Mark to explain to us, okay, or chief, okay, I think January, we starting, before the pandemic, we have a big meeting talking about West Covina homeless initiative regarding consolidate, okay? And we try to help the homeless off the street, not sweep them around. Yeah, go ahead, chief.
Actually, what I would like to do is, I got a section in my presentation that speaks directly about the homeless, and I'll be able to cover everything you want in that section.
I think that would be great. We can put it all assumption during your presentation. Thank you, chief. Okay? And any, anything else? Then we move to city manager report, please.
Good evening, council. Again, I've got just a couple brief items to report out tonight as a city manager report. We are continuing to provide, as a city, mutual aid to other communities up and down the state as they continue to be beset by these different fires, the Bobcat, the North Complex Fire, the Red Salmon Complex Fire. As of today, and these numbers move up and down every single day, we've got 12 of our firefighters that are deployed among three active fires. We are, because the Bobcat Fire is so close also, just coincidentally or directly as a result of hosting some of the firefighters at our facilities, because their alternative would be to sleep on the ground out there on a fire line, we thought we could help them a little bit better. So we're using our Fire Station Two and the adjacent senior center, Community Center, and setting them up with cots and a hot meal. There are so many departments that are engaged in fighting all these different tragedies, that they were down to a sack meal for lunch and a brown bag meal for dinner. We thought we could do a little bit better, so today we were going to try and up it a little bit and treat them as our guests at the city facility. Happy to be able to do that. We had some other departments respond to us at the Park Fire a few weeks ago, and it's really our privilege to be able to respond. Just wanted to briefly mention, there was a Staples Office Depot donation that was garnered this morning for shoppers and $6,329 given to West Covina High School. We think next year it might be able to expand and go to other schools as well. Next slide, Galster Park. We have had offers from community members who want to lead efforts to fund the restoration and preservation of the park following that August 13 fire. There are going to need to be a vegetation management plan put in place. We're going to need to work closely with these volunteers and make sure that we've employed all the right principles of risk management and do what we can to trim or remove the dead trees. The park remains closed, but we're really heartened by the offer of community leadership by people that want to work with us. And we'll return to you with a plan and with some contracts you can take a look before we get going on that. Next slide, this little puppy in the slide is a reminder that we need to all get dog licenses. We're going to begin canvassing in October, which is a really good way for us to make sure that everybody has the proper licenses. Inland Valley Humane Staff will be wearing uniforms, and it'll be a contactless reference, but we want people to just be aware that we'll soon be in the field with that. This next slide is a depiction of the sad state of decay on the top of the parking structure here adjacent to City Hall. And I'm just using this as an announcement, there'll be a public hearing at the next city council meeting wherein council's going to be asked to consider funding to be asked to consider funding a whole host of measures at various city facilities to upgrade other facilities that have been run now until they fail. It's kind of a theme, but HVAC systems and roofs, we're going to replace on this top deck with some solar panels and some LED lights. And we're going to pay for these improvements out of the energy savings that we achieve. Use a specific vehicle that's allowed under state law. So you're going to have a public hearing about that and be asked to consider a $2.8 million package of improvements at your next meeting. It's a way to create financing to get these needed projects done, and we're pretty excited about it. We're still working with this selected vendor on percentages of overhead and profit and interest rates that'll be paid to whatever bank or consortium of banks we come with. We want to make sure we save money in every aspect on that project. Next slide is a reminder for people to be sure and participate in the 2020 census. The city directly benefits from the census data by funds that pay for our meals programs, our homeless services, Section 8 funding, prepare for wildfires, et cetera. So participation rates have been okay. We'd like to get to 100%. That's always an impossible goal, but we just want to encourage people to fill out the census. Next slide, we wanted to mention publicly that the Plaza West Covina is now under new ownership. We have begun to be in communication with the new investment company, Golden East Investors and Pacific Retail Capital Partners. They've acquired Plaza West Covina as part of a seven-mall package through a bidding process. They're going to look to restructure their mortgages and to reposition some of the properties. And there's been a lot of work going into the repositioning with Plaza West Covina. We hope they can pick up where we've left off. We're going to work hard to establish quickly a relationship with the new ownership interest. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention that this Merrill Gardens Community Complex will be offering independent living, assisted living, memory care. It's a total of 111 units, and they're now accepting resident applications, and they're going to be opening later this month. It's very exciting. I think that's all I've got this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much, city manager. I would quick, okay, what the first thing, okay, regarding the, okay, the fire unit, okay, came to our city, we provide the senior center. I think this is a good, a good way to cooperate, to help our other city and especially fire unit, because the Galster Park Fire, which just happened to the Big Legion Fire not too long ago, we have all Dunny, Compton, and the county, all the fire unit come to assist us. We put out a fire in no time. So I think this is a time to return the favor, that is important, work together to stop this wildfire, continue to encroach the people's, okay, property alike. Second thing, I'm going to talk about inland human society. Last night, I think the city council approved, we have an issue with the deficit $500,000. So I think, okay, now he want to do canvassing. I don't know what that to do with what they, okay, over budget, because this is more than $500,000 over budget, and that is different than what the original promise is. So I wanted, okay, and the city manager to look into it. That's what I remember last time, the majority asked you to look into that, okay, to see what compare with Bowen Park, okay, our county and inland, okay, we want to make sure we don't have a deficit, okay, and we do not want to pay another $500,000, okay, the deficit into this thing. So again, number three regarding the, we're talking about the fire, okay, and the prevention, including talking about Gloucester Park with the volunteer, okay, then need to be research and proposal and make sure liability issue, and we need a professional to do the cleanup. And the most important thing is not only Gloucester Park, I think we should survey entire city, okay? We should use the, our fire department to make sure our 16th Park and all the common area, hillside and down south, okay, a lot of common area, they need to use a drone to survey all this potential fire hazard. And I think we need to have a report for that. So anyway, this is my request based on your report. Other than that, we move into concern calendar, okay, and the city council, you want to prove, I know, okay, you want to put number five, okay, Mayor Protem want to, okay, put number five, and number eight, you already put up. So, so we don't have number eight. They need to be researched and show to us, okay, regarding that, because that is an issue we, everybody concerned. Okay, number seven, okay, it's a Dario, right? Okay, and Loi would be number 10. Number 10, and I will put number nine, the equipment for fire fighter department.
Mr. Mayor, if I don't want to pull them, I will, because I already know on number four. You know that in the, in the records?
Number extension of local images. Okay, okay, number four, Loi. Okay, so, Jessica, you want to pull anything?
No, I had talked to the city manager about pulling number eight, so that was my only issue.
Okay, thank you. So we are going to approve, okay, who going to move, okay, the concern calendar, one, two, three, four, six, okay, who going to move?
I saw move.
Okay, Mayor Protem move, okay, item number one, two, three, four, six, and the number four is no on, okay, Councilman Johnson.
And I'll second.
Okay, and Councilman Castellanos second. Roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye, with no on number four.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez-Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Wu.
Aye, and motion approved 5-0 beside number four, there'll be 4-1 on the number four regarding the extension, okay, months of local emergency declaration, okay? And go to the number five agenda, the item number five. Go ahead.
I concur that we had approved the system a while back, which I did request the last time we approved, which, thank you for sending me that last report on September 18, 2018. My question with this is, well, first of all, it said staff reached out to many audio-video vendors. I wanted to know how many and who. My concern is, I always prefer getting a second opinion on any things that we come in and what are the needs. And then on the different reports on the attachment, I was looking at, it had dates, first one, May 6, second one, July 15, third one, August 4, and I wanted to know why.
So maybe we can have Sean to give a report first, then we can bring the question up.
Yeah, so I can answer. So
Is there a PowerPoint report first?
Oh, yes.
Then I don't mind, I can go ahead. You can put the PowerPoint.
I'm going to bring down the key code, who can actually talk about the technical aspects of it. The, if you could, I think, yeah, if Michael can come up to the podium, and I will just...
Can you speak closer to the audience?
I should know AV better. Would you want to take this off? By the way, proud to see Drew Longing hires, two out of three students won awards. He said to say hi. We work and have worked for years providing insight to the West Covina Unified High School. Anyway, we'll go to the next slide, please. This is more of overview who we are. Local California company, a third of my employees live in San Gabriel Valley. We are in 20 years in business. We're licensed contractor, solid team, 85 employees. We're nationwide, a top 20 integrator, nationwide ranked in the entire United States. Just to give you a sort of purview of projects that we've worked in other cities. It includes City Burbank. We've done two, three phases where they've invested over $2 million. Very important, we feel, for cities to have an infrastructure to effectively communicate with their constituents. City Costa Mesa, AV broadcast upgrade, they recently did also an open bid. City of Santa Monica was another large bid that we came in to help their voting systems work through. City of Los Angeles, my company, we bought the company that has a $5 million contract with the City of Los Angeles for all AV support. City of Elandale, we did a system AV upgrade. City of Denver, lots of local clients, including West Covina Unified High School and Mount San Antonio College. So we're very well-known in the industry, have a very good reference and record. We try very hard to be successful, make our clients work. Now we'll go into the project, a little bit about it, just wanted to give you sort of insight. Any questions so far? We got involved slow. There was a request for how to stream the meetings. We came in, we brought in a loner system to allow the city to run, it was an AJA Hilo, $2,000 product. My team came in, my team worked with you guys, you guys liked it, you purchased it. Later, you needed a, an ability to have remote cameras to stream into your system onto YouTube, and you purchased a very small purchase, around $1,500, a live view system. So the next one was 2018, and you were looking for fiber extenders and converters, also a very small purchase. What we really did was, those three things over the last three years was helping define and building credibility that we are a partner of the community, that when you have small little problems, we'll come out and help you. Our clients range from the biggest studios to some of the largest corporations across the United States, but I've always been truly committed to local government and community, primarily for my belief in communication. So Crystal will probably come up and get into some of the details. We, we received a call in April of 2020. As everybody knows, that was a very tough time to conduct business. I'd sent every single employee home except for six skeleton employees we had at our offices for warehouse and for basic technical support. Fortunately, we had moved all of our systems from phone to ERP to CRM, all into the cloud at the end of 2018, so we were able to literally have everybody pack their computer up, go to their home, and continue operating from business. That may be one of the reasons why we were able to respond, and a lot of the competitors in the industry don't. I don't have purview to how many calls were made, and Sean can answer that type of question for you. So effectively, there was an audio failure. The audio system, to our knowledge, and we weren't involved 10 years ago, is a 10-year-old system. So there have been a lot of changes in both audio and video transmission of communication over the last 10 years from a technology level. And if you look at your cell phone from 10 years ago to look at it today in 2020, you could acknowledge the levels of changes that have happened from technology. So you went from basically an AV, like a VHS connection into your programming, all of your city council meetings, to a full IP system replacing the technology so that it could be enabled to work with your new vote link system. Sean can explain why the vote links is going on, and Crystal Velasco can come in, and we can talk through, you know, how technical you want to get is up to you. In terms of the response and how we worked with you, as I showed earlier, we work with a lot of cities in Southern California. Bid, we're competitive, we work hard, and our focus is on your success and outcome of success for the city. So that's the overall. I think there's another slide or two. These were some challenges that we ran into. You have a raceway in here, as you can see, the architecture is fairly solid, you know, it's professional looking, but, you know, running wires and cables in the background is very tough. So your tray up there that runs it is all full. So we were able to reconfigure and allow for the video signal to go IP and the audio signal to go IP, as well the conferences. So we added the new raceways, which would have been an expensive remodel itself in terms of construction and contracting for you. So that wasn't had to be done. All the ceiling speakers weren't working, so we've replaced all of them. And as well, we did things create equalization within the room. Once again, I'd been in this room three years ago, but I didn't sit through a city council, so I can't speak about the audio levels and how they've changed. So we've maintained your existing infrastructure, and we worked through COVID-19 to do this. So, next slide, please. What the project did, and sorry for the point size, I always say, don't go below 30 points, is we basically replaced the old ceiling speakers with cabling and high-quality audio and equalization. So the DSP got programmed from an auditory level to let everybody speak well. We added new Sennheiser microphones, but not all. There was some legacy that we, you know, worked with and built them within. We added a Creston system, which allowed for all of your switching of audio and video, called NVX, which is pretty much the spec that most cities are now going to bid with, integrating for having automation to be able to run a city council meeting. Added new programming layout functionality for the control of projector, touchscreen systems for systems control, wireless presentation access capability. And we'll go through, I mean, those are all the different details. I mean, this is more, we were called, I think you called other vendors, those are questions, council members and mayor that you have to decide on your side. We provided bids, you know, it's, we're a well-known company, high levels of integrity. The reasons the choices were made, you know, the city made your choices. Is there any further slides? I don't need to get into the system, as you're seeing how it's working differently. I have one of my cohorts, Crystal Velasco, who can answer some of the technical questions on the programming, how we built the phone system into your IP so the calls could come in, transmit into the digital signal so that they could effectively stream, that everybody could effectively hear the calls.
So I know you said that you've been involved for the past three years. When I had staff give me the report from 2018, and I understand this is our former city manager, Chris Phelan, maybe Sean can answer, why did we go with Swaget Production LLC to purchase new video equipment? And is this now new video equipment outdated, or?
No, no, so, so nothing that we replaced this time around was video. The video equipment is still, still working. So the, all the, the video equipment from that, from 2018, is all the cameras, they're still working, the switchers, the controllers, for all the video. This was the audio system. And let me talk a little bit about the whole, like, kind of what happened. So the, the key code media was already here because, some of you might remember, we had a project to try to bring in electronic voting. And so we were working with a vendor from Utah, which actually is one of the only ones that works with our system, our video system and our agenda system. So they had recommended Key Code as one of the only companies that could implement the voting system. So they were here when the COVID happened, it, you know, it was great timing because, or the worst timing. Basically, everything shut down, and that's when all of the audio system just died, which is, Crystal could probably explain exactly which pieces died, but they, we couldn't get them back up. We called Key Code to come in to see if we could just repair it, and nothing would come back up. So then I called Western Audiovisual, some other companies, and Corona, and actually one in Covina, but no one was available to come in to look because all their folks had been sent home. So what we were presented with, which I presented to the city manager, basically, we were told it would be a month to two months before they would be able to come back in to do a survey and to give us some of the information. So basically, our choice was have no video or audio, well, the video would be there, but you would have no audio, which is kind of pointless, for at least two, three, four months. Or the one company that already was here, literally that week, and had all our specs and had everything, and had dealt with the city, was our, basically, the only people that would come in. So that was our choice. We could wait and, and have, and we just felt like, you know, the Brown Act, and we, you know, we know how important this is to everyone, that really, this was critical to make sure that everything keeps running. So that's kind of how the choice happened. It was not so much of a choice, it was just circumstance. But we did reach out to all the, the big companies around the area, and it was just timing. They, you know, they were, they were under COVID, just, just like all of us.
When did you reach out to them?
It was, I'd have to, it was early, I believe it was April. It was the same time I reached out to, to the Key Code. So I have to go back through my records of the exact date. But Key Code was here not for the audio system, they were here for the voting system earlier.
So then why on the staff reported attachments, I have three different attachments with three different dates, and some of them, like, says equipment on attachment two, and these are all dated differently, May 6, July 15, August 4?
This is on the
On these here?
Yeah.
I have one for, I mean, and these, I assume is the grand total price of what we need to pay for. So this one states May 6. to pay for, so this one states May 6th, this one states July 15th, and this one states August 4th. And so my concern is, I mean, like I said, I like second opinions, and if you reached out in April, granted, I know COVID during that time was different, and we had reports that came in later on, after, I mean, August, why couldn't we reach out to others?
I think what you're, you're referring to is the, so we did add, one of the additions, which in our, we have a, in our projects, for a project like this, we have like a twenty-five percent where we just, we add on, that's, that's, or twenty percent, that's. And so one of the concerned was, the tables in the back, we did not have microphones. So we reached out to Keycode to see if we could get them to, in their system, add the exact same microphone. So we have, instead of two, which are, we had previously, we wanted two more, so that the back two tables would also have those microphones. So that's one of the, the quotes that you see, that's additional. The other additional is, oh, the other additional is, so there's, there is the three, now I see what you're talking about. And the third one is the phone system, so the calling system for, because traditionally we don't have a ability to, to, for callers to call in, and we knew it was very important, that this is a completely new COVID additional. So we wanted to make sure that, that you could hear the callers, they can hear us. So there's like, I believe that the third quote, which is sixteen seventy forty-five, is actually for Keycode, who is the programmers of this system, to program in the phone system. So that was an additional. These are, both of the add-ons were basically kind of directed from kind of how we're dealing with COVID, and trying to make sure that everything, you know, everyone can be heard and everything is working for everyone, so.
Okay. Well, I know throughout the whole time, and I do apologize to our residents, we've had a lot of technical issues and audio issues since the very beginning, and, believe me, it frustrated me, and believe me, I was very upset and very disappointed. Now, on your end, you mentioned that you've never been to the council meeting, and since we've gone through this month and you've worked with, why would you not listen in to once and fix everything all at the same time and get it done the first time around?
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Crystal Velasco. I've been with Keycode Media for about fifteen years as a systems integrator. Yes, ma'am, actually, we did monitor, I was always in contact with Sean whenever there's a meeting happening, and we would dial in. The complexity of the system doesn't allow for, there's kinks to be worked out every time we integrate into systems. So a lot of them are, for example, we were having some issues with the wireless microphones. And what we have observed was that some of them were, the way they are being used, where the antennas were being covered, so those were the kind of things that we had talked through with the IT team to say, make sure that anybody using the wireless microphones are holding them properly, so that the RF frequency isn't being bounced back. Other things that we're working on now is just to make sure the placements of the antennas are appropriate to the coverage of the city chambers. So we, we, there's, there's the design process that we have done, but there's also, there's that time of a project when it gets complete where we work the kinks out. And so there were experiences that, you know, we do apologize, that you've experienced through, but we are working through that, those problems.
I mean, I understand kinks on the first few, but I mean, after three strikes, come on, and after like five months, I mean, how do we go about, and that concerns me personally, because if a business can't take care of it on the first few rounds, that bothers me. And hence, we go back to me getting a second opinion, me getting, you know, another, another professional because of the frustration, because, you know, the residents blame us at the end. Oh, it's the council, we are not doing anything about it. Granted, I know we put it on staff and so forth, but the frustration, and, you know, it's unacceptable, actually. So I, that's one of my things, but go ahead, my colleagues can...
Well, thank you, lady. That was actually my first question. I mean, part of this is, I am gonna need an overview of this in depth, because to me, it seems like it's being made to be this most incredibly difficult, hocus pocus type of mystical thing, wherein I really don't think it is. And then I see things like twelve thousand for a programming and testing, nineteen twenty for testing, I mean, there's a lot of line items in here with a lot of fluff, that actually I will want to discuss with city staff later, because I agree with Lady. When I, when I saw these green documents, I was like, let me get up and walk around and cool down for a moment. I think I am gonna have to sit with staff and see really get to the nitty-gritty of this, because a lot of what was discussed, to me, is gibberish, and it doesn't help the residents, and as Lady said, it, we have looked bad for a long time. So I want to get back to the beginning of what went down and how, because there were times where frankly, I was gonna come in here during the day and be like, everyone move out of the way, I'm figuring this out, for free. So we'll get back to that later. I just wanted to voice my frustration, because...
Want to table this?
I might add, you know, we've been in business nineteen years, more than happy, my team come out, sit down at a conference table, walk through everything that's occurred, step by step by step. I think from both the reputation level and the level of contracts that we have with multiple different cities, we've shown we're very high levels of integrity, stand behind what we're working. There's a lot of complexities coming in during COVID to fix in a broken audio program. Crystal can speak a little bit more, so that the constituents can hear sort of the challenges we went through, to enable you to be effective and successful communicating with the city. So, maybe some of them...
I would love that opportunity, I think we need that.
More than, total open book. You know, like I said, the cities that we put up there, all open bids. We want them, price aggressive, but also following up for client success. A lot of references, a lot of levels of success, you know, watching the city of Los Angeles get through. My guys did that, you know, for them to be able to broadcast with Mayor Garcetti, different levels, communication...
Are you guys stretched thin? Are you guys stretched thin?
We got stretched, I mean...
Well, I, the only reason why, I mean, I know you have all these organizations, but sometimes, you know, I don't know where West Covina falls on the line of all the other city entities, because I know you guys had to cut and have limited staff. I mean, we all feel the pinch, but I just want to make sure, I take care of West Covina, so West Covina is my priority.
I'm the president of the company, we're a fifty-five million dollar company, one of the largest integrators in the United States. I'm a huge Clipper fan, I'm here tonight. So that, that's my commitment to you. I can tell you that when you speak to other people, I've spent five-plus hours, multiple trips, to West Covina High School, working with your team, on the bills they're doing, all for free, understanding the technology, working with Drew, the teacher of video instruction, about the technology, inviting him, spending time on the phone with him as president of the company with eighty-five employees.
Sir, I understand, I think we understand, okay? I want, I don't want to continue to, okay, and I think I agree with my colleague, okay? I really understand, you tried to talk about, yeah, Jessica, Jessica, we'll give you a chance, okay? So, 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 okay, I think we want, okay, the city council is really frustrated, because we've been sitting from March, and then continue, and then we're coming back, and then we've been, all the obstacle, okay, all the technical, okay, okay, difficulty, again, against so many times, and we sit over here, it's, okay, embarrassed, okay, more than normal this time. So I think this is, maybe we should sit down, and see how we can kind of find a way, and get this thing over with, okay? And I remember in 2017 or 18, we approved to renovate all the system, okay? And then, okay, from March, okay, with pandemic, and to today, okay, the audio is really not working properly. Okay, Jessica, go ahead, you want to say something?
Well, I want to say, I'm kind of stuck in the middle of this frustration. I mean, I'm communicating with the public and with my fellow council people through the city manager's phone, yet we supposedly now have this new audio system. And I have a little bit of a different viewpoint when it comes to this. I believe our system crashed, and I believe our vendor did the best they could based on the limitations within City Hall and our budget. And I'm more frustrated with the fact that, you know, we're six months into this, and this is the first time it comes before the council, and it's for ratification. Why, as they've had these different projects put into place over the last several months, was it not discussed with council as to how maybe to put something in place temporarily, while we figure out what's best as a permanent solution? Rather than this company having to come in and kind of piecemeal as issue by issue comes up? I mean, quite frankly, I find it reassuring to hear that they're working with West Covina unified, because I know what the projects are going on there, because I approved them when I was on the school board. And so, I'm back to being frustrated in general, that this is coming to us six months after it happened, no discussion with us, and, you know, now we're kind of blaming a vendor when we should have been notified quite a while ago on what was going on and what was causing these type of issues. And, I mean, if we had known that we had a vendor doing project after project to make this work for us, maybe we could have dressed sooner, hey, you know, we have a council member who's not able to attend meetings in person, and the city manager's having to put his phone on speaker, so she can hear the meeting and respond in time. So, that's the bigger issue for me at this point.
Okay, very good, okay, thank you, Jessica. I think we, you can listen to, okay, majority of city council really, really frustrated with so many times, okay? Almost every time we hear is, is all the obstacle and the technical difficulty, and we're idling over here. So, so I think we should table this, so we can have a kind of, okay, discussion meeting with you guys, see how we can, okay, city staff, to tell us what you want to do, okay? Because right now, I don't think this is going to, okay, go through. So let's table this, okay? Do I have motion?
I motion to table.
Again? Okay, I have motion to table this, okay? We need to have a discussion from the, not only the building, it's more about when, when we can get this thing over with, okay? And how can we get it temporarily, at least, audio, something smooth, because it's just ridiculous now. Okay, I own business, I have a media room, okay, it's not like this, so it's like, it's been six, seven months, okay? I understand the pandemic, but, okay, after that, okay, everybody, I think in May, everybody go back to work, including my staff. So, so hopefully we can get this thing done, okay, with you guys' help, okay, we'll put it together. So, we have a first by Mayor Protem Lopez Viado, and we second by Councilman Johnson. Rocco, please? Okay, Councilman Castellano, okay, Rocco, please?
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Aye, okay, okay, table this for further discussion, and then, okay, five zero, okay, then move next, thank you so much, sir. Okay, okay, next item, please? Okay, that would be number seven. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Wu. This, really, more than anything, I wanted to give staff the opportunity to explain it. It's very well explained in the staff report, but I want residents to be aware of what's going on and what our solution is.
Good evening again, council. This proposed agenda item continues a practice of the city to have available to the development community on-call planning services for the expediting of projects, should that become necessary, given the schedule of the projects and, and the staffing limitations of the city planning department. So, in response to an RFP, we can end it up with these two top-ranked companies, Joyce Parker Bolinsky and MIG. As an example, I would cite to council, you may recall that we had one of these parallel support structure planning firms in place when the Eminence Hospital thing, project came through, the city planning commission, then was presented to council. So it's a way that the development community can choose to pay extra fees and these extra costs, to get their projects at the, at the top of the list and expedite it. I am happy to provide personal references for both of these firms, have direct experience with each of them, and recommend them highly.
Thank you, city manager. I just wanted everyone to be aware that that option is available, and no additional fee to expedite. I don't have any questions.
Okay, and other council have any question? No, no, okay, and...
I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, okay, I have a motion moved by Councilman Castellano, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, second by Mayor Protem Lopez Viado. I think, okay, and this is something that we can make thing, make our project faster, okay, and let our developer have an option, they're willing to pay, okay, and expedite, okay, make the thing much faster, because it takes money for a lot of, okay, developers, and the city want the thing happen too. So I think this is something we need to monitor, hopefully, they can keep their promise and make the thing happen for us, okay? Rocco, please?
Councilman Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Wu?
Okay, aye, and a motion approved, five zero, then we move, number eight has been pulled by the city manager to further to, okay, get a detail, okay, and, okay, discuss with council, and then with the public. And I put number nine, okay? Okay, I understand, anything is necessity for health, we have to purchase. But this is the first time I, we receive this request. So I want to understand from the chief point of view, I've been doing the city council, okay, since 2015, five years. So, and any time, if the fire department need anything about for health reason, we city, we won't say no, we will, okay, find the money to help you. So please, tell us, okay, all this, and plus, okay, and I think Chris Miller, the one we resident talking about, okay, maybe you can explain to us regarding the reimburse, we kind of Sunset, we saw the Sunset, okay, park, we have some money, okay, we purchase our equipment to you, so maybe, I'm not quite, okay, know this thing, so maybe you can, maybe I don't remember, maybe you can, you lied to us, okay? Go ahead, chief.
I don't have information on the funds for the Sunset Park.
Maybe city manager can check for us regarding what he say, okay, because I have no record, okay, and so hopefully we can see, because my understanding, Sunset Hill, oh no, Sunset Park, that must be going to buy a park, okay, buy the land, rather than give to any other use, okay? That's my understanding, so I don't know where it's coming from.
So, just about every item on here, from, other than the breathing apparatus, testing and maintenance, has been items that's been on the capital improvement programs for multiple years. I just don't think they're necessity and they're important to the firefighters or to the job of firefighting was relayed to you guys over the years to show that we really need them, and they were just maybe thought to be just things we might want. Well, after doing, I've been here almost a year as a fire chief, and we've done an extensive evaluation of the whole fire department and things we need, as we've given to you in a couple PowerPoints, of things that we are in desperate need, this is a shortlist of what we desperately need to bring the fire department up to minimum standards, and these things are out of compliance, and we have to do these now. We were delayed in getting everything evaluated due to the, obviously, I hate to blame everything on COVID, but we were delayed six months in getting everything, getting vendors, getting costs, getting everything, and find out what was going on, or else we'd like to have had this prior to the budgeting and get it on the budget for this year, but it just wasn't possible to get all the evaluation of where we stood in our fire department. Like I mentioned, a couple, two, three months ago, is our risk assessment of the fire department and our needs. So we've now narrowed down everything we need right this minute that's putting people in danger, not only our firefighters, but our, this is when they go on calls and working with staff, we determine these, these are things we need to do right now. Some of the things on here are personal protective equipment, and some of the things are necessary radio equipment to get dispatch to the fire stations, they want a call. Now, when a call comes on, we don't want a dispatcher calling each fire station. It needs to be quick, it needs to be within moments, and we don't have that capability. Our system is fifteen, twenty years old, and it's been broke for five, ten years, so...
Yeah, I mean, my understanding, okay, for five years, a city of, almost five years to December, five years, okay, city and city council, and we approve almost everything, anything the fire department requests, and I think about last year, okay, or the year, I think last year, beginning of last year, certainly the budget, they want another half million dollar for, okay, dispatcher radio improvement, and that is not in the budget during the Chris Phelan, the city manager, we, he said this emergency fund, okay, the fire department, we approve. I remember this is about half a million dollar, five hundred thousand dollars thing. So, meaning what? Meaning we always approve anything that required by, by the fire department. So when you say all the compliance, so I'm kind of surprised, because as I, five years I sit on the city council, we never ever say, no, we don't want to keep, provide this for you. Always try to accommodate anything, the most important thing, because you risk your life, we want to protect, okay, for sure, the equipment, okay, or anything is necessity to protect the health of our... the health of our firefighter. They're like our hero, brother and sister, we want to make sure they are, they are healthy, okay? So, so I, I don't know what, when suddenly you say this all the compliance, okay, again, okay, you can, anytime if you think this is something important, just bring this up to us. I, I don't think any council will have any objection, okay, to equip to our firefighter because your firefighter lives is very important. Yeah, go ahead, city manager, say something.
Thank you, mayor, if I may. If we could answer this evening, the question that the public and now you've raised about the proceeds from the sale of the Sunset Fields?
Yes.
I'd like to have the assistant city manager explain that briefly.
So, yes, we have looked into that, this, and I actually have a copy of the ordinance here that the city council adopted back in 2016, when the city council decided to put a special ballot measure on the ballot at that time to ask the community to vote, to determine the sale of Sunset Field. And in that ballot measure, it specifically asked first if the community should approve the sale of Sunset Field with the proceeds being dedicated to a, a new park acquisition fund. So that was an action that was taken by the council, it was voted on by the community, and that measure did pass. So when that property does finally sell, which we hope to be within the next sixty to ninety days, those proceeds have been earmarked or were earmarked with the passage of that ballot.
I remember, okay, I remember that myself, okay, and Councilman Johnson, okay, and all the previous three city council member, we are five zero approve, okay, to expansion of emergency room and put a ballot. I, I remember. So I, I remember clearly on the, okay, the proceed only go to purchase another additional land, okay? And we purchased two, two land, okay, about nine hundred thousand, another one, I forgot, five hundred thousand dollars additional on the Cameron Park, okay, with the corner of, okay, let nursery, nursery, okay, home, okay, and then we are, have that. But anyway, this is all the subject, we want to focus about your equipment. I just want to make sure, okay, and, and the chief, anytime you need anything equipment, don't wait for it's expire or other compliance, okay, bring it to us, okay? We want to make sure our, our fire, okay, and our staff is protected.
We have a number of items that are still up.
Yeah, if you, if you can bring it up, okay, and it's something very important, okay? We are trying to find anything to accommodate, okay, and to make sure they are protected. I, I think that's important, okay? I think you had to bring it up to us. If you don't bring it up to us, we have no idea because I'm not the firefighters, okay? We just put the budget, but based on the necessity and especially for public safety, okay, especially right now, all this big fire going on and you got running around, try to rescue and try to do everything, and we, we really appreciate, we want to make sure you guys are taking care, okay? And other city council have any other, okay, any other issue?
Mr. Mayor, no, I, it's not with the chief, I just have a comment afterwards about, about number nine.
Go ahead.
No, no, I, my comment is, is that, no, it's to the staff, really, because what I understand is that two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, that's going to be coming out of the reserve, if I understand that right? Is that correct?
All this, all this purchase will come in for our general fund?
Yeah, it doesn't, the general fund reserve?
These are general fund expenditures, and concurrent with your approval of the purchase of these items and the purchase orders, you're authorizing the city manager to effect those purchases and you're authorizing a budget amendment.
So basically, this is not from the previous year's budget, so this is additional, okay?
In the current year's operating budget, yes, sir.
Yes, the meaning is this is, this is never in our budget, now we have to, okay, using this thing, okay, to purchase this, right?
That's exactly right, yes, sir.
Meaning it's increased budget, and we have to use our reserve, of course, because not, this is not budget, right? Okay?
Mr. Mayor, I have one other, other comment. Okay, I do have a problem with, where it says under recommendations, line seven, where it says authorize the city manager to execute any document. I have a problem with that. I don't think the word any should be in that, that, to me, that means anything can be written into it. I, I would rather say a legal document instead of any. Any can mean anything, and that I can't accept. So I would like to see if that word can be changed.
I believe that's the standard, it's in every, every.
But any document means you can say anything you want to say.
If I may try to explain.
Go ahead.
The, the recommendation is, is ninefold, but recommendation number nine is the pertinent part, authorize the city manager to execute any documents necessary in connection with these purchases. So it's not a blanket authority to just sign any document, but connected with these purchases that are on your, on your agenda item.
Because it's only for this purchase.
That's what I'm asking.
They want all the document, the concern with this, okay, so.
I was, I just needed an explanation.
Because I, I do.
It was my main concern.
Something standard, but again, okay, I just want to, chief, understand, okay, well, we approved, just like not too long ago, I think last year, okay, there's all the budget, okay, we, you know.
Yeah, no, I remember, that was, uh.
About five hundred thousand dollars.
It was a little over four hundred, and that was for the networking portion and station alerting hardware and software for.
And I remember, I remember we need to approve it, but otherwise your system will approve, so we, it's emergency to approve that, we approve, even that is not in our budget.
Correct, and with that, we realized that the radios that were being used in the fire station for the communication, the radio portion, firefighters themselves over the last five, six years have taken old radios and built them themselves to make this work with their own knowledge. So now we're getting the proper, modern.
So we didn't waste the five hundred thousand dollar we gave to you last time?
What's that?
We didn't waste the money we gave.
No, we didn't. We still, we only used some of it so far because we need to finish the infrastructure because it won't work, so we haven't spent all the money. We only purchased the equipment, we haven't installed it because we couldn't install it or work it, as well as we were waiting for the dispatcher to finish their upgrade to their new system.
So city manager, do we have oversight, okay, to see all this, okay, because we want to make sure our fire department protected by the vendor telling, okay, them regarding what the requirement, but later on they say this is not going to work, we already approved five hundred thousand dollars supposedly to, to, okay, right? It's with you and with me.
Two different, it's two different systems, it's the networking side and then the radio portion. So there has to be radios for the audio and everything in the station, the stuff we bought before just plugs into that and they don't deal with that, they can't handle that at all, they, they figure we have radios now and they should be working.
Just a kind of question, why the first time they didn't make it right to say this and they survey, just like our audio system, I'm over here, tell us this, we approved it two years ago.
Two, two different, two different applications.
What I'm saying is, my point is this, they're coming in to say, we need this, we need this, so we must have to get it right one time, so we don't always have to put a budget, but we still have it not working, okay, and the dispatcher audio system to make sure you guys communicate each other. So this is just want to make sure when we approve a budget, we can, like, what you want, and please, you understand my point, right?
I totally understand, I'm with you, a hundred percent.
Yeah, it is, it's just get it done. We approve a budget, we think it get it done, but it continue to come back, okay? And they want something just like our audio system, they continue to come back, want this as they're not working properly. We just want to make sure we use taxpayers' money and we use wisely and get it done. At the same time, make sure our fire department, our firefighters, they are efficient and then they are protected, okay, with everything you guys request. We cannot make sure, okay, they're not all the clients, we want to make sure they're in compliance, okay? So anyway, and anything you want to explain to us, all this is, okay, needed, okay, necessity for the fire department to function, okay, so we need to approve this, am I right?
This is the minimum we need right now to get in compliance for safety, compliance for firefighter.
Of course, okay, if this is something that's, okay, we need to, this, even this is not in our budget, but my question is, why last previously, when we're doing the budget, you didn't include in this requirement?
It was discussed that we knew it was there, but we didn't have the actual numbers or everything we needed, and we were delayed on vendors coming in and getting us quotes and looking at what we actually needed, and the budget process with the whole meetings, we weren't able to get it all together, and then it just.
You understand my point, right? Just like, this is necessity, this is necessary, and this is possible where all the compliance in near future, need a budget, you need to tell us, hey, city, okay, city manager, okay, cities, okay, council, we have all this issue, we need this, and so our finance director and our city manager can look into it, find the money, and to make sure you guys are not going to all the compliance, okay? That's what you guys have to bring it to us. We have no idea what you guys need, but we just have to see what you guys need and approve it. But we want to approve efficiently, not waste or not wait, not going to wait, okay?
This is infrastructure funds that we need annually, there's stuff we have to buy that the city hasn't for.
Gradually put on and discuss with city manager and finance director, see what kind of thing we can do it, prioritize, okay, and using the money to see what you need and make sure we can get this thing done.
Got it.
Make sense?
Makes perfect sense, crystal clear.
Any other question? Jessica, do you have any question?
No, I don't.
Okay, and the council? No, nothing? Okay, thank you, chief, thank you so much. Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Okay, I have a Councilman Johnson to approve this purchase, to make sure our, okay, police, okay, fire departments in compliance and they have all this, because they just, okay, waste this issue, okay?
Second.
Second by Councilman, okay, Castellano, rock call please.
Councilman Castellanos.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Wu.
Aye, and a motion approved, five zero, okay, and item number ten, Lloyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just have a couple of questions, Mark can probably answer those for me. As being, being on the San Gabriel Valley Council, Governors for the Homeless, you know, the two things I'd like to know, what has been our share of the major age into the city in the last year or so? And how is it being spent? I mean, how much does that go into our Hope Team and how much does it go into other projects?
I'll start and then I may ask Kelly McDonald, who manages this, to get into some of the details, but the first request for proposal that was circulated was by the San Gabriel Valley CAG. The city did apply for grant funds to hire what's called a housing navigator. That woman is here, she's under contract with Union Station. She does work with the Hope Team, that grant was for three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. She does regularly go out with the Hope Team, she also works with LASSA, which is the LA County Agency that addresses homelessness. And then this item would be the second item, there's another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and as the report says, and the city manager had previously discussed, if this is approved, there would be twenty-five thousand dollars, out of that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be used for encampment cleanup. The first call for projects, I think it's important to note, homeless cleanup was not one of the eligible activities under that, so the first monies that the city received couldn't be used for that. That was specifically used for the housing navigator. So the item before the council this evening, the way the monies would be spent, if approved tonight, would be a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for rapid rehousing, fifty-two thousand dollars to get additional support for the housing navigator, fifty thousand dollars would be dedicated to the police department, twenty-five thousand dollars, as I mentioned, would be for the encampment cleanup for a total of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I don't know, Kelly, if there's anything that I've left out of that list in terms of.
Okay, Kelly, okay, would you please, but, but before you started, okay, I want to share the information with you, okay? I'm the rep, representative city, to join the San Gabriel Valley, the council government, and then we discuss about what the major age money from the county, and I was the kind of big mouth over there complaining about the, the West Covina have been, contribute for three, four years, quarter percent of sales tax for more than ten million dollars. And I've been asking county, where's our share? Where's our money? Okay, where's our money? Okay, and I've been asking at the council of, okay, government, okay, at the San Gabriel, okay, Valley, and then I, then they, they say they have, okay, a presentation, there's three million dollars from county and shared by thirty or forty city. Meaning what? Everybody can just get the tiny detail money from the major age money, right? Okay, and we have to do a lot of paperwork, not even worth our time to using the, okay, step time to get a tiny little money shared with the thirty, forty city, okay? And that's why I, I, I was complaining about, okay, okay, how can, every city is big, different? Like West Covina is a bigger city, okay, and we pay more, why do we get more? Why Pomona get thirty million dollars to build their homeless shelter, okay, spend the thirty million dollar, our, partially our money too, for one hundred, ten, okay, and homeless people in the bunker, bunker bin, the warehouse? How they spend the thirty million dollars, our major age money? Why Pomona get it? Why not West Covina get something? Because Pomona, West Covina, El Monte, we are similar size of city. So, 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 so I don't know, okay, with this thing, okay, they only give us peanuts, or us to give them, okay, more than ten million dollar taxpayers' money, okay, we still haven't received any help from them, very little, but just a lot of lipstick. Okay, go ahead, you want to say something?
Good evening. There are a couple of programs that were part of the CAG RFP, there's a homeless plan implementation, and then there's a prevention and diversion. The, the implementation program was, the CAG took a look at funding cities based on population size, so awards went from fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So they did try to take that population and size into consideration in that regard, and then the other program was for fifteen thousand dollars. The county has only had one cycle, and as Mr. Pisico said, that we had the housing navigator funded as well as the motel voucher program funded for a hundred thousand dollars, and we're waiting on the next cycle from the county to be noticed, they're going through the public comment period of that currently, and.
And I remember when I, okay, in the meeting, okay, when I complaining and they say, well, okay, West Covina, okay, write your proposal, okay, request the funding, okay? And they say, okay, okay, the city, we are going to request million dollars, okay, or something, millions, okay, with S, so meaning we want more money from, we want the money, okay, at least partial of our tax money, okay, coming back, okay, and so we can utilize, okay, and for the homeless, okay, and the issue and problem in our city. Because right now, we don't have a budget for that, and we are, have to do your thing to get the funding, also for the, okay, like hundred thousand dollar here, fifty thousand dollars, okay? I don't even, okay, compare with the money we donate to them.
Right. Those are primarily services that they're looking to fund, the larger scale funding is for development and things like that. I imagine the, the funding in Pomona is for a development center.
And I remember we are joining with couple city, okay, with homeless, and they are going to give us some kind of grant, as I remember, okay, during the meeting, I sent, when I was in the meeting, I right away sent to city manager, said, can we apply? No matter how little, because at least we are going to get some money, okay, from what we pay for, what we deserve, okay, our entitlement, okay? And, and I think, again, okay, county wastes a lot of money to their personnel issue and plus currently, okay, with pandemic, I think they have some other, their own issue. Again, I can tell that, we, we need our major age money to come to our city so we can service, okay, our homeless population. So anyway, I, I don't know, okay, look like this is just a tiny little, okay, I know it's, okay, better than nothing, okay, they just say, well, you take it or leave it, better than nothing, so this is the only thing it willing to provide for us. Can we apply more? Because when I was, okay, okay, complaining at the time, they say, we can put a, when we talking to, you know, that's our supervisor, he said, well, why don't you just give us some of the proposal, like all the city? So if the city oppose anything, okay, to request, or county, okay, because you say, hey, we did request and you didn't give to us. Their, their, her excuses is that, that we didn't apply.
Right, we, every opportunity that we've had, when they put out an RFP, we responded to it, primarily for services and things that were in, mentioned in the homeless, homeless plan that we had, for, for a larger scale dollar amount, we'd be looking at some sort of development.
I think we need to, okay, and emphasize, we have to request, okay, squeaking, we get agrees, right? We have to squeak, and we have to scream and say, where is our money? Okay, we need money, okay, we need. They continue to say our homeless number drop, okay, from 300 down to 142 this year. I disagree. I think we, I can still see homeless here and there. So I don't know how they count the homeless. Maybe they didn't count from the Caltrans or this, okay, freeway overpass. Okay, I- Go ahead.
I have a question, maybe anybody could answer. Does county have a homeless plan who, for homeless who doesn't want the help? I mean, I know the plan is great for those who, you know, get, would like the help and they're utilizing it. But is there a plan for those who don't, like, if they don't want the help? What's their plan?
Not that I'm aware of. We just continue outreach, continue to try to build the relationships. That's the Hope Team and the Housing Navigator is going out in the field and trying to establish relationships and build the trust to be able to, be able to provide services.
But no time limit, right?
Sorry?
No time limit. Like, if you've reached out after two years and they still don't want the help? Just, I'm just curious. Nothing?
I don't know.
Okay. And then my next question, just, I had a resident, I spoke to a resident regarding the homeless encampment cleanup. I know she resides in the Paseo area, actually Mayor Wu's district. I did speak to her in regarding the homeless encampment that it was charged. So with this proposal, Measure H will finally pay for the homeless encampment cleanup? Correct?
Yes, $25,000.
Yeah. And then, and there's no way to retro, retro pay?
I would not think so. I spoke with her as well and I said I would pose the question.
Okay. And then, based on what she mentioned, I know she said 84,000, but when I spoke to her before, it was 8,400. Is it 8,400 or 84? It's 8,400 for six homeless encampments. So that's like 1,400 per cleanup. And that's only on Paseo area. How many homeless encampment cleanups do we, the City of West Covina, like, did in the last year?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have that.
We can certainly pull those numbers together. We do them in a variety of ways. We work with Caltrans, we work with the county, and then we do our own cleanups. Mike Cresse is our Public Services Superintendent. He might have better-
Excuse me, good evening, everyone. How are you today? So the last couple of years, we've been very proactive. And we're trying to get to the cleanups before they get very large. Ones in the Paseos, the ones that are hidden. We average about 12 to 15 of those a year. Trying to talk into the mic, but. We average about 12 to 15 a year, but the Hope Team- I felt like I was getting a lot of feedback. The Hope Team has been doing a great job of getting to those, letting us know about them. So we're getting them when they're smaller. So we send our staff out, I'd say at least two, three times a week, to homeless encampments and try to keep everything on a smaller scale. Ones we have to pay for, which we've used SterreClean, we've used Merchants, we've used different places, it's about 12 to 15 a year. And they could range anywhere from 1,400 to 10,000.
So is this implementation total amount for each line item? Is this only for one year? So technically, on the cleanup, we can pass that amount? Because they're only giving us 25,000?
Correct.
That's a total application, but 25,000 for just the encampment cleanup, correct?
Yes.
So the rest, our general funds are the ones that's going to be paying out of that?
Yes.
So-
Or what other?
Thank you.
As it pertains to LMD4, which the district we're talking about, there is 10,000 annually budgeted for homeless encampment cleanups. So that is budgeted there, we've done that.
10,000 from where? From our District 4?
For District 4, LMD4.
I think, okay, the resident LZ talking about is, he says, not fair using the District 4 their reserve, rather than they should using, okay, major H money, because this is, okay, homeless encampment. That's, I think this is her argument, that they should be using homeless, okay, and the encampment from major H from county. County should give her the money to, to, this is a fee to the great area.
I completely understand, and I've talked to LZ myself as well. I do quite frequently. We will, moving forward, we will use the Measure H money first. As more money comes available, I'm sure Kelly and I will be back, but we'll use that first before we use District 4 money.
Can we apply the major H money for encampment cleanup?
As they have, as they have funding opportunities available.
Yeah, subject to county, county just-
They have, they've typically established a list, sort of activities, that hasn't been, unfortunately. It was for the CAG, which was a good thing.
Okay. Okay, and, okay, Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I find something that's very frustrating. It's not with you, Kelly, it's okay. But being on the San Gabriel Valley College Homeless Committee, we've discussed about major H monies, about helping, you know, develop a homeless shelter somewhere. The problem with the criteria they've set, you cannot build a homeless shelter within 500 feet of a freeway. So if you had some vacant land that was cleared the freeway and you say, hey, this would be a great place for a homeless facility? You can't do it. They won't let you use Measure H money for that. So I don't want to say, you know, there's a lot of frustration, not only with West Covina. Baldwin Park felt really frustrated about it, because they do have some land right there that they wanted to build. And then Major H said, no, you can't do it. So just to let everybody know, it is frustrating, some of the things, and some of the requirements they put on the cities with the money that they can spend. So it's something that we're still working at. We're trying to get the supervisors to change their mind that if a city wants to build a place, they have the land to do it. If it's within that 500 feet, we can get the money to do it. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Good luck, okay?
Yeah, I know.
County changing mind, and that's gonna happen, okay? I think they're using all the money to hire a bunch of staff, all the bureaucracy and bigger and bigger. Okay, money didn't go to the homeless, okay? Okay, and other, you have any? Jessica, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question and something for everyone to think about, too. Does anyone know how much Measure H has amassed by now after three years? I know estimates were about 355 million per year, but does anyone here know that? Is it a billion? Is that on track now that it's been about three years?
I, we'd have to do some research.
Could we ask them that, please? Because it's kind of, you know, off topic, but I think not only the residents of West Covina, but everyone in LA County should kind of be focused on it. Read an article, it was on NBC4. The price tag for some of LA's housing for the homeless is expected to hit 746,000 per. I think at some point, not only the West Covina community, but all of our LA County communities should focus on that absurdity. That's insane. Nothing's going to get done. Money's just going to get burned. And I really want to know how much has been amassed. Thank you.
Okay, Jessica, do you have anything you want to say?
No, I don't.
Okay, so basically, the suggestion, okay, is, I know this is the only they allow us to, to, okay, apply, but I, okay, I have encouragement to city, try to send a request, a request, a much bigger number, okay, like what we deserve, the size of the city and the money we contribute on our quarter of sales tax. So I think, okay, again, if you don't ask, they don't give to you. If you ask, continue to make loud noise. I think they might have to, and I will be in the car, continue to squeak, okay, and scream about what the entitlement for West Covina, some of- So do I have a motion to approve this?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, move the item.
Okay, Councilman Johnson to move, okay?
A second.
Second by Mayor Protem Lopez Viado, and roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez Viado.
Aye.
Mayor Wu.
Aye, but I want more money. Okay, okay, approve five zero. Okay, thank you so much, Carrie. And we go to item number 11, Code Enforcement Update. And I want to introduce, okay, our, okay, and, okay, Code Enforcement Manager, Mylan. Okay, would you please, okay, welcome, and we very happy to have you, okay, join the city with professionalism and work very hard, because I've been calling you, request the city resident issue, and you right away, because of phone, you right away talked to a resident, very proactive, okay, very responsive. And I cannot say more than say, thank you so much to work for the city, and we are very fortunately to have you. Go ahead, Mylan.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity to do a quick presentation and a six-month review of our new code enforcement program. First of all, let's talk about our objective. Code enforcement's objective is to gain voluntary code compliance from property owners, business owners, and tenants whenever possible. In those cases where we have been able to achieve voluntary compliance through a series of written requests, or in those cases where the property owner, business owner, and/or tenant indicates that they will not correct the violation, additional enforcement actions may be taken. Next is a snapshot of our current staffing levels in the Code Enforcement Division. The Code Enforcement Division is comprised of one full-time manager and seven part-time officers, which is the equivalent of one and a half full-time employees. The division services the needs of over 110,000 residents and 3,000 businesses in the city. When we launched our new program, one of the first things I did was to divide the city into four service areas, which mirrors the four service areas of our Police Department, Areas 1, 2, 3, and 4. After the city was divided into the four service areas, our first goal was to proactively drive every street in the city to identify all obvious code violations. The map in this slide is a working copy that show, that sits on my desk. As officers drove each street in the city, they used a highlighter to identify the street that was surveyed. We continued this process until we drove every street in the city. Another tool that we launched at implementation of our Code Enforcement Program was the Go Request app. The app is to handle all types of service requests. The system allows city staff to accept online service requests and communicate with residents via email. The system has also been integrated into our city's website, along with a mobile portal for both Android and iPhone users. Question of how Go Requests are reported. As you can see from the next chart, most requests are submitted by phone. The other roughly 25% are submitted through the internet or via email to city staff. Next slide shows open and closed Go Requests by month throughout the various departments that use the Go Request app. In this chart, you can see that the overall number of Go Requests has steadily increased each month for all departments. The next slide concentrates specifically on the Code Enforcement Division. In the Code Enforcement Division, we receive and open and close an average of 200-plus requests per month. With all of our Code Enforcement cases, we try to follow some basic code case procedures for consistency. So when we receive a complaint, we open a Code Enforcement case. We verify that the address is within the city of West Covina. We then conduct an initial inspection to determine if a violation does exist. Oftentimes, people report things that are not a violation, so it requires that we do a visual inspection. If we are able to determine that a violation does exist, and if the property owner, business owner is a first-time violator, we'll send what's called a courtesy notice. Courtesy notice is mailed to the property owner, business owner, and/or tenant, requesting voluntary compliance. An alternative method to the courtesy notice would be a verbal warning. So if we go by a property, we see somebody standing out front and they need to mow their front lawn, we'll just stop and talk to them. Say, look, we are going to ask that you mow your front lawn and clean up the property a little bit. After the notice is mailed, we'll do a follow-up inspection. If the correction, violation has not been corrected, we would send what's then called a Notice of Violation, which again, gives the violator, whether it's the property owner, business owner, tenant, an additional 10 days to correct the violation. However, if the violation is corrected based on the courtesy notice or the verbal warning, our next step is, we send a thank you notice to that resident and that business to acknowledge that they've voluntarily complied and we appreciate they're taking pride in their property and their business. When we issue a Notice of Violation, the violation is mailed to the property owner and all responsible parties for that subject property, and also outlines remedies to correct the violations before taking the next step. We'll follow up the Notice of Violation by conducting, again, a follow-up inspection to see if the property's been brought into compliance. If not, we will then issue what's called a Notice of Administrative Citation. Notice of Administrative Citation is mailed to the property owner and all responsible parties for the subject property, outlining the code violations and possible remedies to once again, correct the violation, and again, always asking for voluntary compliance before fines are imposed. Next slide is, in cases where we have, extreme cases where imminent threat to public safety exists, such as slumlord living conditions or fire life safety issues, an administrative citation may be issued as a first step in order to ensure immediate compliance. When do we issue an administrative citation? If there is no correction after the initial visit and subsequent request for correction, the handling Code Enforcement Officer would evaluate the situation. If it appears the violation is not going to be corrected after the noticing process, an administrative citation would be prepared and mailed, which includes a fine and gives the violator 21 days to pay the citation or they may appeal the citation. The citation is issued to the property owner and all responsible parties regarding the outstanding code violations found at the subject property. And also, within the administrative citation, it also includes the remedies in order to abate the violation so we're not forced to issue additional citations. If after reinspection, the violations remain, additional citations may be issued to the violator. Office conferences. The office conference is our final attempt to gain voluntary compliance at the local staff level. A notice is mailed to the responsible parties, whether it be the property owner, tenant, business owner, inviting them to a conference to come meet with me, handling Code Enforcement Officer, to sit down at a table and discuss violation and remedies, so Code Enforcement in the city does not have to exhaust any other remedies in order to abate the violation. Once we meet with the violator, the property owner, business owner, we'll send a follow-up letter to that person, summarizing our meeting, outlining timelines and process to bring the property into compliance so the city does not have to take any further actions. If the city is to take further actions, Code Enforcement may use additional administrative citations, or we may pursue other legal remedies such as civil penalties, nuisance abatement, criminal prosecution, or a civil injunction, up until asking the court to appoint a receiver in order for us to remedy and abate violations on a property. Next chart shows the number of Code Enforcement cases open and closed over the first six months. As you can see, in March and April, we really ramped it up, opening almost 1,300 Code Enforcement cases just in the first two months. You can see a steady decline in the number of cases because we hit it hard right away. We got out there proactively and tried to identify everything without having people have to call in and complain about a property. You see a spike at the beginning, we're starting to level out, and it's more maintenance and following up on complaints. How Code Enforcement cases are reported to city staff? The next chart, you'll see that 61% of all Code Enforcement cases are initiated by Code Enforcement staff. We're proactively out there trying to identify violations before people have to call them in. Another 13% of the cases are reported by other city staff, whether it be the Building and Safety Division, the Planning Department, Engineering. So in total, almost 75% of all Code Enforcement cases are initiated by city personnel and not waiting for somebody to call in and file a complaint. Next slide shows how we classify our Code Enforcement cases. Out of the 2,357 cases generated in the first six months, almost 2,000 would be classified as a general public nuisance. These are primarily dealing with property maintenance violations. The next slide shows you, gives you a breakdown of the most common violations that we address. Overgrown vegetation, trash and debris, again, basic property maintenance. But in a six-month period, we addressed and notified property owners, tenants, over 4,560 violations in our city. Next slide shows a summary of action counts within our Code Enforcement cases. You'll see that we did over 4,900 inspections. You'll see, under phone calls and emails, it says 1,824. Those are just significant phone calls and emails relating to a case. In no way does that capture the thousands of other phone calls and emails that we address throughout the first six months. In total, entered into our software program under action counts, you'll see that we entered 16,155 actions just in a six-month period. During the first six months of operation, our Code Enforcement officers have mailed over 5,000 letters to residents and business owners regarding property maintenance violations. Through our efforts, we are seeing improvements throughout our city in both the residential and commercial zones. The next three slides show some before and after photos of properties that we addressed, both proactively and reactively throughout the city. As we move forward after our initial six months, some of our- As we move forward after our initial six months, some of our goals are to increase the training and development of our code enforcement officers, continue working in collaboration with the community to address concerns, preserve and enhance the property values of residential and commercial properties through code enforcement efforts, work closely with the commercial and residential property owners to improve and update the appearance of our assets. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you so much, Mylan. Okay, and council, okay, Mayor Portman, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you so much, Mylan. Code enforcement was my biggest thing. When I campaigned, I remember walking to this one resident, beautiful immaculate yard, and he informed me that he put in a, our former code enforcement, he filed a report on a neighbor around the block, and of course, when he calls in, he has to give his address, and then the address that he's complaining. And I did look at that yard, it was like junkyard in the front, it was just an eyesore. And he received the, back then, I guess it was the yellow card, and he said, "They gave it to me," and his yard was beautiful. So I was frustrated with code enforcement back then, I had to step in, I was only a commissioner. So I knew, based on walking, a lot of the residents were saying that was the biggest issue they had, code enforcement. So I'm glad that you came along, I did spend a day with you, and your software, the upgrades, everything you've done, perfect. And with the pictures, including the pictures and the letters, that's proof. So there's no inaccuracy of giving it to the wrong person and so forth. What I like about you and letting the residents know is that you work with our residents. It's not here, like, "I'm gonna find you, you know, this is it, he'll work with you and allow, you know, give you time, whatever it needs be." So that I do appreciate. Now, I know we did have one resident on the last council meeting regarding carports, he's using the canopies type, and I know that is based on our rules, that that's not allowed. I was wondering, is CDBG funding still available? And do you give them those options? You know, I know we have West Covina Beautiful, who helps out if they can't, you know, whatever they can't afford, or something like that, but do we, do we give these options?
Yeah, we, whenever we work with residents, we provide them all the options available at the city and staffing level, including volunteer groups, different funding sources, working with our economic development team, West Covina Beautiful, all those groups. Our goal is not to issue citations, our goal is to work with the community to gain voluntary compliance and enhance the quality of life in the city.
Well, thank you for keeping our city beautiful. But in regards to CDBG, would maybe our city staff, do we have CDBG available? Yes, we do. And do they cover the carports construction?
This may be city staff can answer that question, Mark?
Yes, we do have, Kelly's here.
Kelly, Kelly, you are the professional CDBG firm. 10,000 or something for improvement?
10,000.
Home preservation. Home preservation. Carports we have to look at. Are the programs still available?
Still have to go to the city planning to make sure they comply with the coordinates.
Okay, thank you.
Kelly, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
You know, I would just like to say, you know, I want to thank Mylan for everything he does. I know him and I do a lot of texting back and forth, you know, and every time there's something done, this man works seven days a week.
Seven twenty-four.
Yeah, if you text him, he's on it. And we've never seen that before. And I know about the resident that Mayor Portman was talking about, because before we had districts, I had talked to him, they have a beautiful yard, but the next door neighbor of their backyard was a junkyard. And, and I know it's been taken care of. But like I said, you know, I want to thank you very much for everything you do for the city. I know you go above and beyond, and I think the residents should know that. You know what? I told a neighbor the other day, "How do I get in touch with, with that code?" I said, "Download the app, Go West." I said, "If you put it on there, they have everything you want, whatever the code enforcement problem is, you just click one of these, you send it in," I said, "and you will get a response." So Mylan, I want to thank you very much for everything you and your staff does.
Yep, thank you, Councilman Johnson, okay, I know, okay, you want to say something? See, see, everybody appreciate, okay, about your performance, because I think firsthand we have, because a resident emails us, calls us all the time regarding issue, or then regarding code enforcement issue, okay, and so we, we either call you or text you, sorry, or email you, and you right away respond to us, okay, I, I think this is something, okay, and very, very proactive, okay, and the resident liked it, because you right away talk to them and try to resolve the issue. We're talking about state brothers, or whether notice issue coming back, I think you're going to see the managers about, okay, all the news and about the notice, because that will make people crazy. So we need to make sure the quiet enjoyment, okay, and adjacent to, okay, the supermarket, and if they deliver the truck, and they let the truck idle and smash and this, and really disturb the neighborhood of, in the 2:00 o'clock, 2:00 o'clock in the morning. So I think this is something, okay, and it's sound like it's not important, but I think it's very important for people, quiet enjoyment, okay, and this is the core ordinance, like we need to make sure this neighbor issue. But again, I cannot say anything more than thank you so much for very proactive, okay, and a very, okay, and, and working so hard, okay, and that's why I say, wow, very proud our new addition to keep our city. West Covina is a beautiful city. Live over here more than 30 years, and I remember this beautiful city, and a week for previous 10 years, a little bit dusted. Okay, I think time for you to come over here, make sure the commercial property, the private property, and the residential, okay, all this, our street graffiti, we've been driving around, okay, and then make sure your staff see the graffiti reported, okay, right away remove it, okay, and again, you see any island with all we, please have, okay, our priority work to make sure our island, okay, that is clean all week. But again, I just want to say thank you so much, Mylan, okay, really appreciate you working for the city. See, we, we don't always try to give people a hard time, we try to, people doing a good job, we just tell them, "Thank you so much," okay, for the hard work. Yeah, go ahead, Mayor Portman.
No, I just wanted to let everybody know, he was part of the Go Request app creation, so everybody that's using it, you know, we want to say thank you, it's a great app, and I want to make sure that all our residents utilize that, that's where they put in, you know, the graffiti, the mess, all that is in there. And if you've seen on his end, I mean, everybody puts it in, but if you see on his end, there's tons of reports, so for the limited staff that they have to put in all that request, I just wanted to say thank you for your hard work.
And Jessica, Jessica, do you have anything you want to say?
No.
Okay, no, okay, so.
One little comment first. And I also, like I said, there was a gentleman that lives behind me on the other street, he had a canopy up in his front yard for, ever since I've known him. And I've lived in District 1 over there in West Covina for over 50 years. And the gentleman came over and says, "I just got a thing from our code enforcement that this canopy has to come down." And I just looked at him and said, "Well, it has to come down." And he says, "There are the violations." I said, "The problem was, we never had a strong code enforcement that followed up on it." So, and I just, I tell him, you know, "If it's illegal there, it's illegal." You know, so I want to thank you once again, Mylan, you guys are doing a great job.
If you see all the, all the beautiful city, upgrade city, they all have a very strong code enforcement to make sure and to protect the property value, okay, because people want to live in nice and beautiful neighborhood, okay, they don't want to see, you try to keep your property nice, and then you see some other obsolete. But again, Mylan, thank you so much, should we just receive and fire, right? Okay, we don't have to vote, right? Okay, it's just a presentation. Mylan, thank you so much, keep up the good work, okay, and I'm going to call you all the time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mylan, thank you, appreciate, okay. And next one, we go to the item number 12, Police Department Update. Chief, yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, and members of our viewing audience. My name is Richard Bell, I'm the chief here at West Covina, and I'll be giving a presentation and an update of the police department today. We'll be covering a few items, personnel, use of force, department numbers, we'll be talking about our traffic unit, some HOPE statistics, our detective bureau, and some social media. Right now, we are authorized to have 90 officers, and we actually have 90 to date. And that 90 does not mean that we are full, it just means we have 90. We are working on adding more officers to our department as we move forward. Five of those officers are currently injured. Our detective bureau, we currently have 12 officers, we have a special enforcement team that have five, we are shorting a few vacancies, but we're working on that as well. Our patrol consists of 52 officers in the field, that's 24-hour coverage, five shifts, and seven beats. So we are utilizing the officers as best we can there. In our traffic unit, we have four officers working there, our dispatch unit, we have 12 full-time, three part-time, we have some vacancies that we are working on there. Our SROs, we have three of them, all of them have returned back to the school as of August the 8th, and they are currently focusing on truancy and mental health issues, and we are monitoring their usefulness at the schools. So we'll be taking, keeping an eye on that. Community groups around, next slide. Community groups around the country has questioned law enforcement as a whole with respect to their response to use of force, and if there were any de-escalation training being offered. The city of West Covina have been, have been using de-escalation training consistently since 2015, when the department switched over to Lexapro. Lexapro sends out department legal updates annually, which helps us stay in line with current legislation. I'm going to cover a little bit about our use of force, so bear with me. De-escalation requirements, the department's ultimate objective in every law enforcement contact is voluntary compliance. In order to achieve this, officers are required to undergo de-escalation training. The following policies are areas where de-escalation techniques are frequently applied, in our use-of-force policy, in our civil dispute policy, in our crisis intervention incidents, and in mental illness commitments. And there are certain areas throughout our use of force that I'll be covering, so duty to intervene, this has come up in the news, you've seen it several times. This has been a topic of discussion for concerned residents at the West Covina Police Department. We require any officer present and observing another officer using unnecessary force to intercede and prevent that force from occurring. That officer also has a duty to report his or her observations to a supervisor. I'm sorry, you, you're ahead of me, can you go back, please?
Go back.
Right there. You've also heard citizens talk about the use of force continuum. We use a range of force options. Officers at the West Covina Police Department have a range of force options that may be implemented depending on the totality of the circumstances in order to effectively execute an arrest or legitimate law enforcement purpose. And that range consists of command presence, control holds, restraint, OC spray, tasers, specialty impact weapons, other chemical agents, K9 deployment, and lethal force. Officers shall use only that amount of force that reasonably appears necessary, given the facts and circumstances perceived by the officer at the time of the event to accomplish a legitimate law enforcement purpose. These policies you can find online, and you can read them verbatim. If an objectively reasonable officer would consider a safe and feasible, and feasible to do so under the totality of the circumstances, officers should evaluate the use of other reasonable available resources and techniques when determining whether to use deadly force. So it's not just a blanket, "Use deadly force." We are required to, to look for other alternatives before we actually get to that determination. This has been a hot topic, next, and on chokeholds and strangulations. The use of chokeholds and strangleholds are not authorized for use by the officers of the West Covina Police Department. The following is an amendment to the policy that we recently made, any carotid or choke restraint is strictly prohibited unless faced with a deadly force, I mean, unless faced with a situation where deadly force would be authorized. So our take on it is if you can use a gun, and if you're in that situation, then you can use a chokehold if it's deadly force only, but you can't use it to put someone out or to try to take them into custody. I hope that makes sense to you. I am fully aware that the use of carotid restraint is being evaluated by California lawmakers, and we will make adjustments to our policy accordingly. Next slide. You're way ahead of me, I like that. Shooting at moving vehicles. Shots fired at or from a moving vehicle are rarely effective. Officers should move out of the path of an approaching vehicle instead of discharging their firearm at the vehicle or any of its occupants. Any officer should only discharge a firearm at a moving vehicle or its occupants when the officer reasonably believes there are no other reasonable means available to avert the threat of the vehicle, or if deadly force other than the vehicle is directed at the officer. Officers should not shoot at any part of the vehicle in an attempt to disable it, at the tires or anything like that. Statistical data regarding all officers involved shootings and incidents involving use of force resulting in serious bodily injury is to be reported to the California Department of Justice as required by government code. You can see that there, we do comply with that. Any use of force by a member of this department shall be documented properly, completely, and accurately in an appropriate report depending on the nature of the incident. And when you read this policy, there's a number of things that they have to abide by and have to include in the report, and we have supervisors that make sure that that information is actually in the report. On a use-of-force incident, a supervisor, once on scene, is expected to obtain the basic facts from the involved officer and ensure that any injured party are examined and treated, and that includes suspect, witness, officer, or anybody. Supervisors are also responsible for overall scene management and make sure that evidence is collected by officers or crime scene technicians. This is all still part of our use of force. They're also, they also have to make sure that any and all witnesses are contacted and review all related reports. And just so you know, on a shooting incident, we actually do our own shooting investigations, and when we reach a number that we cannot handle, the sheriff department comes in and they actually handle the shooting investigation. Or if it involves particular situations, we'll have them come in and assist us, and they've been very gracious in doing that. Officers will receive periodic training on the use of force policy and demonstrate their knowledge and understanding. The following are some of the training courses the officers have attended over the past three years. The department has and will continue to offer training regarding various topics through POST and other organizations. Training is offered on a monthly basis and a yearly basis at a cost, but we have a calendar that we go by, and there's certain mandated trainings that we must do, and we adhere to those every year. In January of 2020, we, we did some de-escalation training, that's with our use-of-force portion of it. That's done throughout the department. We're in September now, today, we just had our first, we just had our first topic on community policing in the 21st century to reduce conflict. It's called CP21, Why Didn't You Stop Me? It's been deemed appropriate by POST, and this organization came in, the first session was today, second session is tomorrow, we'll conclude it on Friday. And from the reports that I've gotten from our officers, it is extremely well put together, it's put on by an officer down in Long Beach, and I can't wait to attend the training on Friday myself, but I've got nothing but rave reviews from it so far. With the COVID this year, we have had to suspend some of our training because of the proximity and closeness and the touching. That's understandable, as things open back up, we'll be able to get to some of that training. In 2019, we had two out of the four trainings cover policy, de-escalation, use or techniques in deployment. So 2019, we had two, in 2018, we reached, we reached three of the four de-escalation In 2017, we also had three out of the four trainings covered in our policy where it relates to de-escalation, use of techniques, and deployment. Now I'm going to go over some statistics, which I think Now I'm going to go over some statistics which I think will interest, um, everyone here. In this slide, it illustrates the number of calls for service per year. Now, keep in mind that we have ninety officers here. And in 2018, uh, we had eighty thousand, over eighty thousand calls for service. In 2019, we had just over seventy-three thousand calls. And up until July, uh, of 2020, we've had thirty-three thousand calls. And of course, a lot of that was slowed down because of COVID. The felony arrests are in red, misdemeanor arrests are in orange, and all the other calls for service are in black as you look at that slide. Next slide, please. On this next slide, the felony arrests continue to be in red, and misdemeanors in orange. And out of all the arrests that were made each year, the blue line, if you look at the blue line at the very bottom, it represents deadly use of force, and the purple line are all other uses of force. And you can see that's a small number compared to the contacts that we make. As mentioned earlier, other options include control holds, restraints, handcuffs, you know, OC spray, and so on, as I've reported already. The number of times, times officer use, uh, force. So in 2018, we had eighty, uh, uses of force. I'm sorry, in 2018, of the eighty thousand calls for service, eighty times, uh, use of force was used. And officers only use that on a zero point zero nine nine percent of the time per call, or three percent of the time every once someone's arrested. That's how low we've used, um, uh, force. In 2019, of the seventy-three thousand calls where officers use force, zero point one three six percent of the time per calls, force was used, or four point three percent of the time when there was an actual arrest. And finally, in 2020, of the approximately, should be thirty-three thousand calls, um, officers use force on zero point nine two percent of the time per call, or three point seven nine percent of the time during an arrest. And as you can see, those numbers are fair enough. When you have to use force as law enforcement, absolutely. Uh, but I think we use it when it's appropriate, we use it the right way, these numbers remain low. Um, I'll move on to officer. In 2018, we had eight officer complaints, one of them was sustained. 2019, we had nine with zero complaints sustained. And as of 2020, this is as of July, we had three complaints, zero, um, sustained. And those complaints can be anything from, I didn't like the way the officer talked to me, to the wide range, and so when you look at the complaint, not all like it's bad, sometimes it could just be, so as a recap, West Covina handled from January of 2018 through July of 2020, hundred and ninety-one thousand calls for service. And out of those calls, we had five thousand eight hundred arrests, and there were two hundred and fifteen times where force was used. That translates to zero point one one percent of force rate per call, or just over three percent per arrest. None of the force used involved carotid control holds, vascular neck restraints, or any type of chokehold. In the last two and a half years, the West Covina Police Department only used deadly force, one time resulting in an armed suspect being injured. This time, I'll move on to the traffic. Right now, the sworn staff in the traffic unit consists of a sergeant, a corporal, and two motor officers. And just so you know, um, it used to be fully staffed with ten. We are doing our best with what we have right now. We also have some non-sworn support staff, we have a community service officer there, and we have four cadets. Our four cadets are generally focused on traffic-related issues. And as of today, I, I should have put the number of sites they wrote, but I don't have that right now. Uh, but they, uh, currently have issued four hundred, over four hundred thousand dollars in citations. That's just with four cadets. We're authorized eight, and we are working on getting up to eight. Uh, there is criteria with our cadets, they have to be in college, along with working. So there's a, a balance that they have to, uh, adhere to. This next slide will illustrate, um, uh, the most problematic intersections within the city as it relates to traffic. You can see Amar and Azusa, uh, is the busiest intersection. This goes back a year, and within this year timeframe, there's been forty traffic accidents, um, at that intersection. And if you look across the top, I think the, yeah. Um, if we go down, we see Azusa, and Garvey, Berenca, and Garvey, Amar, Temple, and it just kind of goes down from there. I just wanted to highlight that, um, we do put our traffic machine out where watch your speed and basically warns you to slow down. Uh, we've done other things, uh, with, uh, traffic lanes and those sort of things. So we are working on that, but with two officers, we're covering nineteen square miles. It's tough to do sometime. Fatal collisions, in 2019, we had fatal, five fatal traffic collisions. One of them was related to DUI, two turning violations, and two of them was at the termination of a pursuit, uh, for other related, um, issues. In 2020, we had three fatal traffic collisions. One was related to DUI, one was a pedestrian in the roadway, and the other one was a turning violation. I think we spoke last week about the Office of Transportation Safety Grant. Um, we've been using that quite frequently over the years. The Traffic Unit Security and Safety Grant from October 2019 through September 2020. And as part of the requirements of the grant, two DUI checkpoints were conducted, one in December, and one just a few weeks ago, um, on a Friday. And over the course of this grant, officers conducted several primary collision factors, enforcement-related collisions, and several DUI sat- saturation patrol related to alcohol and drugs. So these have been beneficial to us. We'd like to do more, but we're sure appreciative of the grants that we've gotten. And we just secured another one for next year, so we're happy about that. Homeless outreach. A little disappointed to hear, uh, uh, someone speak about our homeless outreach because, um, we're kind of one of the leaders in, uh, when it comes to this. Uh, our hope officer, which we have one right now, another one was injured, we haven't been able to deal with. And as a chief, I have to put officers where I think they're best used. Sometimes we have to move them around. But Officer Ling was assigned to hope just in April of 2020. Uh, we were able to assign him there, and he's done this on his own. He's handled three hundred and ninety-four homeless incidents. He has received and addressed twenty-eight complaints coming from the GO Gov app. There have been a hundred and fifty-seven arrests involving transients. There have been a hundred and forty-nine transients that have been identified through field interview cars. He's done an extremely good job at documenting every person he talks to, name, address, phone number, all of the pertinent information, so that we can track our homeless. It actually helped us, um, when we do the homeless count. Uh, someone mentioned that, uh, our information is outdated on our website. Well, you have to define outdated, we put the information on there on a yearly basis. It's not on a monthly basis, if you were to look for last month, you won't find it. So we have twenty sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, because those years have already passed. Twenty twenty will be updated when we turn into twenty twenty-one. Now, I'm aware that we could update it by the month, that might be something we look at. It may help out some of the statistical data that some of our residents are looking for. Right now, it's by the year, and it's not outdated. Um, Project Room Key, um, is something that started when COVID, uh, hit us, and it was a collaboration between the state county and LA Homeless Services Authority to secure hotel and motel rooms for people experiencing homelessness to prevent the spread of COVID nineteen. We have placed to date thirty-eight people in Project Room Key. Twenty-one people are still currently residing in Project Room Key, that was as of the end of July. And there are eight people awaiting placement. Nine of the people we placed could not act right, or for whatever reason they were asked to leave. We have partnered with some wonderful people that have helped us and have been helping us over the last couple of years. LASSA, Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority, Union Station, Department of Mental Health. We, um, we have started the Hotel Voucher Program, or it's in the works, I believe we've already started it, as Kelly mentioned. Um, and our code enforcement officer, Gresham, has worked with Altrans, uh, LA County, and our local businesses with respect to homelessness. And of course, we can't forget the city office, all of these departments, we've paid up efforts. Um, as I look around the cities, um, that are close to us, that are next to us, we are leading the pack with our effort. So it's a little disappointing to hear someone say that they are disappointed. I'm telling you right now, I'm very proud, um, of our hope team. I hope to build that number up, it'd be nice to have four people, we can work both ends of the week, maybe get into some evening hours. Right now, we have one, but we're doing the best we can with that one. Our detective bureau. Um, we hardly ever talk about this, and I won't stay on this too long. But just from January to August, um, you can see from up there that, um, cases come in all the time. We are down when we are expected to still carry the case load, and we've done a good job with that. Um, you can see what each desk is actually carrying. This is not what they are actually working, this is just the cases that was added. The only cases that have not worked are those that are suspended, or can't be worked anymore. We work every case to the lead, um, and lead until we can't work it anymore. Sometimes cases are suspended, and then later on, we buy for information that we get. I understand that our citizens, um, whenever they make a report, they want immediate action and they want it now. Sometimes that can always be. I want you to know that our detective bureau is working hard with the amount of people that we have here. You can go ahead and switch. Um, and just so you know, it's broken down into two areas, we have crimes against property, and then we have crimes against persons. Totally separate detectives, they work different things. Um, the crimes against person consist of murder, robbery, theft, crime. Crimes against property or vehicle theft. Uh, the last area that I'd like to discuss is our social media. And, um, this may be a tough topic for some. Um, we have revamped our social media. Spent about thirty thousand dollars a few years back to really get up to speed. You actually have to click on the police department website, uh, to see this. If you just click on the city website and you don't go to the police department, you don't have some of the data that you're looking for. But what I want to talk about a little bit is, um, we had some complaints about, we, we used to post on our, on our website, those individuals that were arrested. So if you came to West Covina, you committed a crime on your own, on your own, you committed a crime. At the end of the week, we would do a recap, we would post those pictures and say, these people did these crimes. Reason that's important to me is some of those, uh, individuals are repeat offenders. You know, um, the courts have clamped down, people are being released from prison at a rate that we've never seen before. Sometimes we arrest someone at ten o'clock in the morning, and before we can leave the station at eleven, they are already released and back out on the street. That doesn't help. I'm not complaining about the court system, they have to do what they have to do. But it's nice to know that if an individual's a repeat offender, that neighbors can look out for one another, and they can recognize that. When we started putting those pictures on our website, it was in no way related to anything related to bias, we don't pick the people who we find, we just wanted our people to be aware. So we ran some statistics, and on Facebook, we found out that as we were doing this, there was one thousand one hundred seventy-eight people who liked what we were doing. Um, there were a hundred and thirty-nine positive comments to only nine negative comments. I think our residents liked what we were doing. Um, and those statistics are there, and this is, we, we took a portion of it. If you look at the next slide, you can see where the positive comments are in green, and the negative comments are in red. So there's a disproportion of those that don't like it and those that do. We also have Instagram, and you can see some of the same numbers. Four thousand two hundred and forty-eight people liked, hundred and twenty-nine positive comments to only five negative comments. Now, in the next slide, we'll show that graph as well. And again, you will see a disproportionate number of those that like it and those that, that don't. I understand what time we're in right now, and I understand that we can use anything to say that this is bias and that's bias. I want you to understand from the police department, we are trying to do police work, not call someone out because of their race, color, or anything. It was up to us, I would have no crime, unfortunately, that doesn't happen. We do have crime, we do have repeat offenders, we do have people that we've arrested multiple times. Our residents want to know. They have groups out there, they have neighborhood watch, um, they talk to one another. Uh, when they see things out in the community, they communicate that. And sometimes we get leads based off of them. So I just wanted to bring this up, I'm not saying we need to keep it or not. I'm just saying that our residents like it, and it is disproportionate to those that like it and those that not, that don't. When we took it off, it was because a few residents said they didn't like it, and we wanted to have counsel at least look at the numbers, take a look at it, and decide, okay, maybe this is something we can do, maybe it's something we don't. Um, I'm here to tell you, if you say no, uh, I think it's best that we keep it off, I'm okay with it. We're going to do our work regardless. I want you to know that overwhelmingly, residents like, like that, and other agencies are doing it as well. So either way, I'm good with it, we're going to continue to do our work. Um, I've also listed, if you click the page, these are some of the comments that was made. They're both positive and negative comments up there. Um, if you want to take a look at it, um, it's there, and I, and I, and you can go on some of the blogs and read it yourself. It's, it's actually there. So that is the end of my presentation. Um, at this time, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Uh, Chief, okay, uh, excellent report, okay, okay, a lot of detail and a lot of good information. Okay, and the councilman, okay, and the Castiano, you want to say something, go ahead?
Same thing, Chief, great, great report, thank you so much. And on those last slides, because it was me who, at least one of the ones who brought, wanted you to shed light on, on the images on social media. Uh, after seeing the overwhelmingly favorable evidence, I would like to recommend and seek the support of my council colleagues to bring that back. In addition to what you said, I've been watching this closely in other cities, including Covina where I work. Uh, very recent example, very dangerous fugitive was caught due to this, so I'd like to make the recommendation. Thank you so much for putting it into perspective and giving everyone the chance to listen. Let's bring it back, that's, that's my view.
I don't remember we removed that, right?
Didn't really officially remove it, we, we wanted to discuss.
It was out of an abundance of caution.
I don't think we removed it, though.
I didn't have a chance to speak on it. And I thought it'd be better if we put it in a presentation, so we, we removed it. No one formally voted on it, we just removed it and stopped it.
Remember, we recommended to.
I felt I had a chance to talk about it.
To run your department, okay? Unless you have issue, and then we have to vote on that, other than that, you want to protect us, so make sure our community's safe. That's what our resident wants. And councilman, okay, uh, may I put it, go ahead?
I just wanted to say thank you so much, I know I've been haggling, and I want stats, I want this, and I, you know, tell the staff and you to bring it out because I wanted the residents to see, and I do appreciate the detailed report that you gave, including social media. Um, so thank you, and, and I know we discussed that yearly annual brochure that we're going to get on that. Okay, but thank you.
Cat out the bag.
Okay, they don't know what that is yet. So, um, but I am excited of what the police does. I know for the, um, website, the West Covina Police website is wonderful. And I think most of the residents that are complaining, it's our city website, which, you know, broken links and stuff, which I know we've been working, um, and they're going to get that fixed. And we're getting that one, um, done. Um, also, you know, my heart goes out to the two sheriffs that were, um, ambushed and shot. And, you know, one of them, one of the sheriff is a mom, six-year-old boy waiting for mom to come home. So I, yeah, I, um, I, my hearts go out to them. But on the report, I'm just curious, do you have stats of how many, on the reverse side, of how many of our officers were, uh, used, forced upon, um, and, you know, injured? Because it, I know sometimes we're all in that, um, mentality that it's all police officer, you know, doing these things. But sometimes it is the reverse, I mean, as we've seen that. Um, do you know what the stats on that of our police officers?
I don't have those statistics, I don't want to just put numbers out there. Um, when you're in effect. Um, when you're effecting an arrest, sometimes people are just agitated because either they're getting arrested or whatever. And so passive resistance is something that happens where it causes officers to have to put hands on someone. Then if, if there's a struggle then, is that really an attack on the officer? I'm, I'm not sure it is. As it is, someone may be just not wanting to go to jail or get arrested. As far as like an all-out attack where someone just wants to fight the officer, I don't really have that statistic. I can tell you that it does happen, uh, not just in West Covina, but other agencies, but it's in a low number. You know, but I, I can maybe have someone try and research that. It's kind of tough. You'd have to go through reports and see what the reaction was, but, um, but it does happen, and we are aware of it. We, you know, that's why, you know, the, I'm sorry, the rules are there, and we, we try to follow them as best we can. It's subjective sometimes, what I'm saying.
How many of our officers had, um, died in the line of duty?
We've had three since our existence. Um, the last one was actually in nineteen, nineteen eighty-three, where a subject was high on the ECP, and actually was able to pull the shotgun out of the vehicle that was secure and get one round.
Is the officer ready?
That was ready, yes, and that.
You have a ready wait?
Yes.
And I just want to know, I just want to say our officers do, uh, an exceptional job as for like the hope team. I know I, I was talking to one officer's, they, surprisingly, they know the whole, the transient set are out there, and some of them are repeat offenders wi, with drugs. And I know I was informed that when there's certain type of drugs, like, uh, type of drug that is just, uh, higher dosage or whatever it is, it's just, they're really, um, high or just very aggressive. And I, I, you know, I was informed that, you know, when you take them to the fifty-one, fifty hold, uh, where they, take them to L.A. County, that they're supposed to be put on the seventy-two hour hold. They're supposed to keep them there, but they're releasing them the very next day, give them token, and they're back at West Covina. So I know it's like a, again, a vicious cycle to just go back and forth, but I know you guys are out there, so I just wanted to say thank you.
And I just want to add, um, recently, I, I mentioned the year eighty-three, but just a few years back, we had an officer shot, didn't die. That was from an altercation, right up and beat one, and, um, and we had a dog shot as well. Um, so, uh, things do happen.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes, first of all, I do remember the officer got shot. I was there a couple hours after he got shot. And I'm going to think, no, Chief, I want to thank you so very much. It was an excellent report you did, and I also want to thank you for bringing up about the hope team and the homeless. It's a shame when certain residents get up for their self-serving purposes and try to put down our department, our hope team, and our officers for the excellent job they do. But, you know, the council, we know what job you guys do, and ninety percent of the residents know the job you do. And I want to thank you so very much for it, and I think your hope team's doing a fabulous job. Thank you.
Uh, Jessica, do you want to say something, Jessica?
Um, just that I agree. I used to look forward to the, from the police department, um, every week, and I would share it on my council Facebook page. I think it was an important tool to our community, and so, um, I hope it is brought back.
Okay, okay, thank you, Jessica, okay? And any, okay, I, beside we are praising you, okay, and the department, I still want the improvement, okay, respond time, okay? Okay, I think it's okay, and, uh, that, that is a lot of, a lot of resident complaint. I think you know it, okay? I understand we understaff, we underfunds, okay, and, uh, but still, okay, we have to find a way, im, improve the respond time, okay? Especially nine-one-one, okay? Like sometimes it's like life and death, we don't know. So hopefully, okay, beside we have all this praise, okay, about our magnificent, okay, West Covina PD, but at the same time, they have a room for improvement. Okay, the improvement is how to make sure our resident safe, and then when they call, and they, in the timely manner, our officer can show up. And, uh, we will try everything, hopefully, next year's the budget, like, that we can have some kind of, hopefully, revenge shopping, okay, due to this pandemic, hopefully over next year, that we can have all this, and, uh, hopefully, we can continue to help our city be safe, okay, and our resident. And other city council, any, anything? Uh, it's, it's such a one, that's why I, I want to keep your, okay, document, I save it, okay, I want to review more in detail, because this is such a wonderful detailed information. Another thing, we don't even, I don't even know, even five years as a council, but this is a good information for you to share with us about entire, okay, our police department, okay, and, uh, why is the function, how many, and will the way we can help to improve. Traffic, cop, okay, once upon a, we have ten. I remember in, back in nineteen ninety, okay, and, uh, you call the police, three minutes they show up, a nuisance from the next door neighbor, okay? And then, and then hopefully, we can, okay, have enough of, uh, okay, uh, staff so we can have the service again. I think this is what our resident looking forward, okay, to help and to make sure, and then we want to make sure our police officer's safe, okay, too, okay? Other than that, we want to thank you, and, uh, we want to, we see them fire, right? Okay, okay, Chief, good job. Thank you so much, okay?
Thank you, Chief.
And, uh, next item, eighteen thirteen, we talk about distance learning center, okay? Who's going to report this? City manager or assistant city manager?
I'm, I'm happy to, um, report at the direction of, um, Airport Tim Lopez Vialto. We were in direct communication with the West Covina Unified School District about this idea of distance learning centers. I'd like to say that the, the district really wants to build its partnerships with the city, but wasn't interested at this time, just given where they are with their budget and their programs. Their first priority, given that they've given, placed in the hands of every student a, a device, is to get these students back and reopen the schools. So as soon as they're eligible to do that, they will, but I just didn't think they were able at this time to fund, um, a distance learning center at one of our facilities. Um, they're just not in a place where they can do that.
I mean, as long as the option stays open, and if, if they need it, our city facilities are there to be available anytime that they like, but that's fine. I mean, it's a school, they know they're a school.
Okay. I, I think this is a, a good, um, program, okay? And if, how can we help? Okay, because the city and the school district are saving, uh, serving the same population. And we have, uh, also children that right now stuck at home, and, uh, I think it's very difficult for a lot of children to learn, okay? And because the home environment and the school environment is, um, is totally different. So if we can provide, okay, the facility, they then feel like this is more like a school and with a social distance, and we have, uh, what, twenty thousand last time, the donation with the children size of, uh, okay, and mask? Have we, okay, school come to pick up for their children or?
Delivered them. The masks that were donated, we delivered them the next day.
So how many school receive all this?
We took them to the district office. I don't know how far they disseminated them from there.
I make sure, okay, we want to report, okay? And I think we owe those donor the report, where those merchandise donate to, okay? And, uh, we don't want this thing to be wasted. It's people, their love and their money, and they donate to our children, and, uh, we want to make sure, okay, we want to report from each school you, and I want to report, okay? I want to get this report to the donor, just like all the report we give to them, okay? So please provide a report, okay? And, uh, please continue to provide, okay, this offer to the school district, that we are standby if they need it, uh, we have a facility for them to use, so the children can come in, at the same time, they can utilize, okay, hopefully, the, the mask to be in, okay, big space with social distance. Other than that, okay, uh, you go ahead.
Can I just make one request? I know L.A. County libraries are actually having distance learning at certain facilities, and I know that they voted some, I'm surprised West Covina wasn't one of them. Um, can you just find out, uh, if West Covina could be part of that list? Um, and, I, at least that's an option. Thank you.
So please, okay, provide a report about all those children's masks, okay, give to which school district, and how many they got it, and who got it, okay? Who got it, okay? So, so we let record, we can send to the donor, let them have a piece in mind that we really deliver to the needed, okay, people in need, children in need. Okay, other than that, just we see, we see them fire, tell them we still stand by our offer. Anything else? Anything, okay? Any comment? Uh, Jessica, do you have anything to address?
I do not.
Okay, oh, thank you, okay? And the other council have any other may I or any requests? Go ahead.
Um, actually, I'd like to request, uh, if we're going to post emails online, um, I would like to request that the addresses be removed. I don't like any personal information, and just even me, as if I was a resident sending an email to, you know, to be posted, I would like to make sure that address is not on there. Just remove it. Thank you.
Okay, and done, okay? Uh, all the personal information should be removed on the public, okay, so for the safety reason, okay, and privacy reason. Okay, other than that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Adjourn, okay, and, uh, sorry to be late, okay, the ten forty today to, to our, thank you, Jerry, to still stick with us, okay?
Jerry should get a prize for being the last one here standing.
We are going to give you a, a certificate next time. The most donated citizen, okay, and come to supervise, make sure we are in, we are in, okay, in check, okay? Thank you so much, okay? Stay healthy, and good night, and, uh, meeting adjourned. Thank you so much. Thank you, Jerry. Okay, have a good night, try carefully.